All please stand. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. We acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pay our respects to elders past and present. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open and I remind all councillors of your obligations to declare material personal interest and conflict of interest where relevant and requirement of such to remove yourself from the council chamber for debate and voting where applicable. Councillors, are there any apologies? Minutes please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,608th meeting held on Tuesday the 12th of November 2019 be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Richards, seconded by councillor Marks, that the minutes of the 4,608th meeting held on the 12th of November 2019 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, I draw to your attention the public participant, Mrs Yvonne Campbell, who will be addressing us today on the Special Care Central forums for seniors and people with a disability. Welcome, Mrs Campbell. Now, you may stand or sit, whichever you prefer. You have five minutes, which commences when you begin your presentation, and there's a clock just to your left. Welcome and begin when ready.
Good afternoon, Mr Chair, Lord Mayor, Councillors. Thank you for acknowledging my request to be here today. Special Care Central is currently an all-volunteer organisation which was launched in 2012 as a multimedia information centre providing links for people with disabilities, aged seniors and carers to service providers. Having personally experienced difficulty in trying to find where I could get help and support when my mother was initially suffering with memory loss, I became involved in many seniors and disability network organisations. After meeting with so many wonderful service providers that I'd never heard of before, I began to ask the question, how does the community like myself with a special need find out about them? It's important for small business to have the same opportunity to promote their business as the major corporations and it's our mission to support them. Back in 2009, I held our first disability awareness expo to find out if service information was what the general community wanted to know. It proved to be a great success with numbers of people walking out with bags of information saying, I had no idea there were all these services in my area that could help me. The expos then continued annually over the next nine years. During these years, we were grateful to receive the support from a number of councils, including the Lord Mayor and councillor Davis when she was in her previous role as Disability Minister. Now that the NDIS and My Age Care have been rolled out, it's more important than ever that the community with a special need know who is in their area and the services they can provide, as it's now up to the participant, as most of us would know, to select the service provider and no longer are they told who they can use. Special Care Central have six channels of engagement and they are our online portal directory, stakeholder engagement team, mastermind support group, Care Central television, social media and face-to-face forums, which is the reason I'm here today. In previous years, we held the forums with carer and network groups and now wish to continue this activity and hold them in the City Council library meeting rooms, six times a year, two forums a day, two hours per forum. These will be held like many expos with up to ten service providers, local services relating to the topic of the day. They will be the speakers, letting the visitors know what their service offers and giving visitors the opportunity to discuss their needs with them. We will also provide a Q&amp;A to enable time for guests to express their frustrations or needs for services they cannot find. My request today is for support with the promotions and advertising of these forums through the libraries, the client base and council newsletters and the supply of tea and coffee for the visitors. We will work with council providing feedback about constituents' concerns, whether it be access difficulties, transport or even events in the area. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Can I please call on councillor Maddick to respond?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you, Mrs Campbell, for coming in this afternoon to speak to us about this important issue. Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinar and this administration are very passionately committed to disability access in our city and making sure that it's a city for all. And through our previous term, 2012-2016, we undertook a significant amount of work around our access and inclusion strategy and took the lead of any other council in the nation in regards to the level of investment that we put into public transport, for example, around accessibility of our busways, our bus stops, our city cat terminals and councils' buildings, but importantly also into public spaces as well. As part of our journey in being able to do that, we've worked very closely with a number of leading peak bodies in the sector to better understand the needs of the community as a whole, and it's something that we're continuing to work on. We're currently doing a refresh of that access and inclusion strategy to update it as to current needs, but also technologies and organisations that we can work closely with. As you said before, information is absolutely fundamental to anyone suffering a disability and having that available to them so they can have their needs met through various organisations such as yours and other peak bodies is absolutely key. Your desire to have a forum, I think, is certainly most welcome. Council offers a number of opportunities to different organisations. We also provide sponsorship to different forums and expos who provide information and provide access to different providers in the area of access and inclusion. So I would certainly welcome the opportunity to arrange a meeting with yourself and our library staff to have a conversation about the kind of forums you'd like to run where and when and see if we can be able to assist you in regards to providing a library. Council also has a number of different venues that it has as far as community halls and other spaces that you might also wish to consider as part of that overall strategy of being able to deliver that programme. But thank you again very much for coming and talking about this important issue. We certainly appreciate the work that you're doing and contributing to community and we certainly as a council very much support organisations like yourself and other peak bodies in being able to provide our city as an inclusive and connected city irrespective of what disability people suffer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs Campbell, for coming in. Mr Pearce will assist you. Councillors, are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or a chair of any standing committee? Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, the residents of Brisbane have been supported by communities Australia-wide when we have faced our own natural disasters. Given the devastating bushfires across Queensland this week, can you outline how this council will be helping with these communities in need?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Davis for the question. Obviously, all of us in this place stand united and our hearts go out to everyone who has been affected by bushfires around our region in recent times and also further afield as well with drought. It is heartbreaking to see the impacts of both of those terrible tragedies having on our Queensland communities and also in other parts of Australia as well. And councillor Davis, you rightly pointed out that in times of need, Aussies get together and we help each other and we support each other. And we all remember how the community came together to support Brisbane and other parts of the state that had suffered in the 2011 flood and many other natural disasters. And people came out and they gave their time, they gave their support and they also gave their money as well to help with the flood recovery in 2011. Now, Brisbane City Council, as a large council and as a council that has run consecutive balanced budgets, we have the ability to help out. And so I want to announce today that Brisbane City Council will be giving $100,000 to support the bushfire appeal that is going on at the moment. This is something that I'm sure all of us will support and that $100,000 will be split between four different charity organisations, between Red Cross, Salvation Army, Lifeline Queensland, St Vincent de Pauls and also a donation to the Give It Bushfire Appeal for Queensland Fires 2019. And this money will help add to the $100,000 that has been given by the state government as well. And I'm pleased that we are able to give on that level equivalent with the state government contribution and it is important not only that council gives, that the state gives, but that people, if they have the capacity to help out, do that as well on an individual basis. And so we will bring through a submission to council next week in that respect to approve that $100,000 donation and certainly I would hope for the support of all councillors for that contribution. Obviously, the situation remains critical in many parts of the state. We have been very fortunate in most parts of Brisbane to escape any major bushfires or major damage. Over the weekend, I was closely monitoring the situation and council was closely monitoring the situation on Moreton Island where there is a bushfire underway at the moment. And council continues to work with the QFES to manage that situation and we've been assisting with the evacuation of residents as well to make sure that they are removed from areas of danger and that they are able to get away from those situations of danger and wherever possible back to the mainland. So we will continue monitoring that situation. The QFES today is doing a major backburn to create a new containment line to stop the advancing of that fire and we certainly hope that that goes to plan. But as we know, these situations can change quickly and so we will continue to work and provide any support possible. On Sunday afternoon, I participated in an extraordinary meeting of the Queensland Disaster Management Committee. That is a statewide committee, including the premier, various ministers, mayors and also senior representatives from our police, fire and emergency services. It was an important meeting to make sure everyone had an update on the situation and that help was granted in the areas where it is really needed. So we, obviously in Brisbane, as I said, have been so fortunate to not have any major bushfires at this point or major loss of property or life and touch wood that it stays that way. But there have been so many other parts of the state which have been severely affected and I think it is the right thing to do to make sure that if we have the capacity to help, that we help. And so that support from council and I know the support from the community is something that is something we should do and I do believe that the residents of Brisbane will support that move as well.
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, when I became opposition leader, I started a separate account into which my expense of office allowance is kept. It has a balance of around $1,645 after tax and I haven't spent one single cent of it. I cannot envisage any expense directly related to my position for which I could not receive a receipt. Every worker in Brisbane knows you can't claim work expenses without a receipt. The Australian Taxation Office does not allow work-related expenses claims without receipts. And I don't expect you to know or speculate on what previous mayors, chairs or opposition leaders spent their allowance on, but Lord Mayor, I believe the people of Brisbane have a right to know what you spend your $100,000 expense of office allowance on and why no receipts are produced. Will you tell them?
Lord Mayor.
It is not surprising but very disappointing that we yet again see the Labor Party's obsession with salary and allowances. These are the people that introduced the existing situation and these are the people that want to set their own salary and allowances. We, on this side of the chamber, believe that should be done independently. That is exactly what is happening right now as we speak and we're looking forward to the outcome of that independent review that is underway right now.
Further questions? Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of City Planning Committee, councillor Burke. Councillor Burke, it is my understanding that on Friday of last week, the Development Tribunal issued an important judgment relating to council's enforcement notice for the Broadway Hotel. Can you please update the chamber on the Development Tribunal's decision and the steps ahead to protect this iconic site?
Councillor Burke.
Thanks very much, Mr Chair, and I thank councillor Toomey for the question. As all councillors would know, this administration led by the Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinar has a very strong track record when it comes to heritage protection across our city. Indeed, today in the papers, we are continuing our heritage protection of another 27 homes as well as protecting iconic vistas in the CBD. We are also formalising the provisions around the Temporary Local Planning Instrument for Lamb House and moving that from a temporary local planning instrument into the formal city plan as part of a major Amendment K. But it is councillor Toomey right that the Development Tribunal on Friday made a decision with regards to the Broadway Hotel. For the history of this site, let's not forget that there has been multiple fires over many years on this site and back in March this year, council issued an enforcement notice to the owner for them to make good the site in terms of safety and protect the site from further damage or from falling elements of the heritage onto the people moving past the site. That was appealed, Mr Chairman, appealed into the Development Tribunal and for nearly eight months, it has been being considered by the Development Tribunal. And last Friday, they made their decision. They upheld our ability to enforce under the Building Act the provisions to make safe this site, even though it is a state heritage listed building, Mr Chairman. And so now council is working through the next steps of the process. The applicant has 60 days to take effect of those works and we will be monitoring very closely their works on the site to make sure that no further damage is done to the heritage elements of the building while they make safe the site. Mr Chairman, it's critically important that we make sure that the heritage values of the Broadway Hotel are protected going forward. And I've had some very positive conversations in recent months with the state government, including a meeting with Minister Enoch on Friday where we had a joint agreement on a way forward to protect not only Lamb House but also the Broadway Hotel, Mr Chairman. It was a very positive meeting and one where we outlined all of the challenges facing both the state and also Brisbane City Council with regards to our powers under the Building Act but also our ability under the Heritage Act. And I want to thank Minister Enoch, Mr Chairman, for the collaborative way that she's approached this very significant issue for the West End, for the Wollongabba community and indeed the broader Brisbane community when it comes to protecting heritage across our city. Our track record as an administration is very strong. We introduced provisions to protect pre-1911 homes, we've toughened provisions around character housing, we've introduced temporary local planning instruments to protect key elements across the city. And again here, Mr Chairman, we're showing our commitment to protecting the heritage and cultural value of our city with these additional protections and works that we're doing now with regards to the Broadway Hotel. We will, as I said, be following up and working with the state. I believe that they are in the process of drafting a notice under the Heritage Act to enforce their provisions that they have and the powers that they have to sit side by side with council to jointly enforce the ongoing protection and preservation of not only this property but of course other properties across the city, Mr Chairman. It again highlights the need of a collaborative approach. The Building Act allows us with certain powers to stop people from allowing buildings like this one from falling down. It only allows us to have them temporarily fenced off, to install structural supports, Mr Chairman, to provide those safety elements to stop anyone who may be moving through the site or around the site from being put at harm. But when it comes to protection of the actual heritage elements on these sites, Mr Chairman, we need the state government standing shoulder to shoulder with us, using their powers complementary to our powers to make sure residents can have confidence that we're both working to protect these sites across the city. Mr Chairman, I know that the community down there in Wollongabba has been very vocal and very passionate about this and it's great that the Building Tribunal has upheld this decision and we now have a tested case under the Building Act of our powers and the way that we are able to enforce the protection and preservation of these heritage buildings. But most importantly, the willingness and collaboration with the state government to get on and actually deliver and protect these buildings in a joint way for future generations.
Further questions? Councillor Johnston.
Excuse me. Yes, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, does council have any plans for the upgrade of road, pedestrian and cycling facilities on the Oxley Road underpass at the Low Rail Bridge separating Sherwood and Corinda? If not, when will you ensure that they are prepared to fix this problematic bottleneck?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question, councillor Johnston, and certainly happy to come back to you with some further information on that question and I acknowledge your interest in this matter. Thank you.
Further questions? Councillor Murphy.
Yes, thank you very much, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Financed Administration Committee, councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, this administration has a long track record of strong financial management and delivering balanced budgets. The Queensland Treasury Corporation has agreed and for an eighth time in a row, confirmed Brisbane City Council's financial standing as strong with a neutral outlook. Can you outline how we plan to continue on this path and what the alternative should be if Labor were to get into administration?
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Murphy for your question. This administration has an outstanding track record of responsible financial management, consistently delivering a balanced budget year after year. For the eighth year in a row, QTC have issued council with a strong, with a neutral outlook credit rating in their recent 2019 review. To put this in perspective, I'm not aware of any other council in Queensland that has been able to achieve a credit rating as high as Brisbane City Council's. We know that Brisbane residents expect us to responsibly manage the budget while still ensuring we deliver on new infrastructure and other initiatives that will make the Brisbane of tomorrow even better than the Brisbane of today. This year in June, Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinar delivered yet another budget that has record investment in core services and delivers almost $1 billion of infrastructure spend, all while keeping the books balanced and debt levels under control. We continue to keep the internal costs of council down and aren't afraid to make the hard decisions to ensure the costs are kept under control. This is one of the major reasons council has been able to continually deliver a balanced budget and receive a strong credit rating. One way we keep our operating costs under control is to ensure that we don't have an inflated bureaucracy unlike what we are seeing with the state ALP government. Through sound financial management, we can deliver the projects and programmes that our growing community need. Programs such as free off-peak travel for seniors and our first homeowners' rates discounts are achievable because of strong financial management. We have been able to do this without threatening our operating surplus and risking our strong credit rating. We are delivering approximately $1 billion in infrastructure spend, which is one-third of council's budget. A number of these projects are focused on ensuring visitors, residents and workers of Brisbane can get home quicker and safer. In this financial year alone, there are more than 700 congestion busting projects being delivered by this administration. This council delivers major infrastructure projects that elsewhere in Australia would be delivered by a state government. Projects such as Clem 7 go between Bridge, Legacy Way and now Brisbane Metro, a testament to this administration's ability to leverage strong financial administration to provide infrastructure for our growing city. This administration is the only council in Queensland that subsidises the public transport system to the tune of $130 million per annum and delivers 60 new buses each year. We are doing this while introducing new initiatives that will make Brisbane better, including five new green bridges, Brisbane Metro and record investment in new parks. This administration can deliver all this while keeping debt levels under control. QTC, a recognised independent body in their credit review, have recognised council's capacity to deliver large infrastructure projects while still managing our debt levels. In fact, while council has received approval from QTC for new borrowings, council has not actually drawn down new debts since 2017. This is because we have a strong record of delivering projects within budget, allowing savings to be reinvested into new projects. We have seen what Labor do with debt levels and that is to keep increasing them beyond manageable levels. That is the Labor way. We only have to look at the state government's $90 billion of debt outlined in their budget, an increase of $10 billion on their forecasted debt levels the previous year. Through tight financial management, we can deliver the projects and programmes that this growing city needs while keeping rate rises to a modest level and certainly way below the rises experienced under a Labor administration. Councillor Murphy, through you, Mr Chair, ask what the alternative would be under a Labor administration? Well, last time they were in administration, they increased rates by more than 6%, four times.
Okay, councillors, the answer will be had in silence, please.
Four times. This administration has never increased rates to that extent. The people of Brisbane should be reminded of how hollow Labor's rhetoric is. They have recently spoken of rate reductions for early payment of rates but have not indicated how it would be funded or what services would be cut. You can be sure, you can be sure that when Labor run out of money, they will come after yours. This administration, the Shrinar administration, continues to keep rate rises at a modest level, ensuring we have the lowest minimum residential rates in South East Queensland while offering discounts and remissions to first homeowners and pensioners to ease the cost of living. We have not achieved this credit rating by accident but by managing a very tight budget and keeping a focus on costs.
Councillor Allen, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. And I will preempt this by saying I don't really care what Jim Sawley or Clem James did or didn't do. Actually, the last time that Jim Sawley was in this chamber, I was in year 10 and the Lord Mayor wasn't even elected. We are interested in what is happening today. Lord Mayor, do you still, after all the public outcry over transparency standards in local government, believe it is appropriate for a politician to receive large sums of public money being paid directly into a private bank account without any accountability whatsoever?
Lord Mayor.
Well, we know why Labor's asking this question. Week after week, Labor comes in here and they throw mud and they personally attack...
Point of order to you, councillor Cassidy.
The Lord Mayor is required to answer these questions on the meetings. He's debating the question.
The question, the answer is literally 12 seconds old. Please allow him and he has five minutes, councillor Cassidy. The answer has been going for 12 seconds. So I think we can allow the Lord Mayor an opportunity greater than 12 seconds to answer the question. Councillor Cassidy, you took more than 12 seconds to talk about your own personal autobiography in your question. So please, please allow the Lord Mayor to answer your question. Lord Mayor, please answer your question.
Thank you. Yes, as you well know, I have five minutes to answer the question and Labor loves democracy so much that when they hear something that they don't like, they interject and they kick and they scream and they throw tantrums. Now, we had a question about transparency and we had a question about allowances and it's fascinating because on the 17th of October, the opposition leader told the Brisbane Times that he had told council to stop paying him his allowance. We now discover that that was false. In November 10, he said he was paying back the money the next day. We now know that was false. And now we find out the money's still sitting in his account. Let's talk about transparency. Let's talk about telling the truth. Councillor Cassidy has had three or four different stories about this because he's obsessed with salary and allowances. I'll tell you what I'm obsessed with. Building a better Brisbane. I'm obsessed with delivering the Metro, delivering Victoria Park, building new bridges, delivering bikeways and road upgrades. That's what I'm obsessed about and I will continue to do those things. And while Labor digs around in the mud...
Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, look, this is fascinating insight into the Lord Mayor's obfuscation when it comes to transparency and accountability. He's not answering the question. Could you please direct the Lord Mayor to answer the question about accountability of public money?
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. I will call him when you're completed. Lord Mayor, can you please address the concerns that sent out the question?
I would simply say why hasn't councillor Cassidy asked the same question of councillor Peter Cumming, who for three and a half years collected the same allowance that councillor Cassidy is collecting and hasn't provided any kind of evidence on what he spent the money on?
All right. Further questions? Councillor Richards.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Public and Active Transport and Economic and Tourism Committee, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, over the last week, public consultation for council's proposed five green bridges opened. Can you outline Team Shrinar's vision for this new infrastructure and how residents can get involved?
Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you councillor Richards for the question. I am more than excited to stand up here and talk about how Team Shrinar is delivering for the people of Brisbane. It was only several months ago when the Lord Mayor was sworn in as Lord Mayor on the day that he was announcing that he was taking on the role, a major policy announcement and that was the... and that was these five new green bridges. I am very excited to have the portfolio that has the carriage of Team Schrinner's five new green bridges, which is about getting cars off the road and getting home, getting people home quicker and safer. It is going to give people options. You can still stay in your car if you want to, but the options will be so much easier. It will be far more enticing if you live in Kangaroo Point or just out of Kangaroo Point to hop on a bike and e-mobility or walk straight into the CBD, taking 15 minutes off your travel, at least in peak hours, over the Story Bridge. At a time when there are 1,300 people moving to Brisbane each month, we need to make sure that we are planning for the future, that we are connecting our suburbs to our central business district and moving around the city with minimal use of cars on the road as well. That is Team Schrinner's plan: future-proofing Brisbane for years to come. And this is in stark contrast to what we hear from Labor's Lord Mayor candidate, who has announced absolutely nothing since he replaced Rod Harding. The choice cannot be more clear when it comes to who should be running the city: Team Schrinner with Lord Mayor Adrian Schrinner with a comprehensive policy agenda and sound financial management, as you just heard from the Finance Chair, or that other guy. Connecting the city by either sides of the river is crucial in making sure we can get around town: new bridges from Kangaroo Point to the CBD, to Wong to West End, St Lucia to West End, Breakfast Creek and Bell Bowery. We opened consultation just 10 days ago and we have been inundated with the residents that are so keen to have their say on what they'd like to see and do. Thousands have been out in droves to the consultation, over 1,000 on the online surveys, emails, call centre calls, telling us what they would like to see. And it is very loud and clear, it is cycling and it is pedestrian, with the opportunities for public transport, either using the bridges or at least really connecting the bridges by being close to it to cross over as well. The consultation opened on 11th of November and will close on the 6th of December, and it really is right now about Brisbane having their say on what they'd like to see. Ultimately, these are the words, these are the guidelines that we'll use for our location, our alignment and the design of the bridges as well. And don't take it for granted, this is an enormous investment for this city, an enormous investment. And why can we invest this money over the next 10 years? Because of Team Schrinner's sound financial management that allows us to plan for the future. But we need to make sure that we're in lockstep, the residents, and that is why we're listening through the consultation process. We released the business case for the Kangaroo Point Bridge in September, and it showed us it is a very cost-effective value-for-money investment for this city. It has been spoken about for decades, I would say actually even over 100 years. They were talking about the Kangaroo Point Bridge well before the Story Bridge. But obviously, we had a big infrastructure investment in the 30s for the crossing in the river, and now it's time to see what other opportunities there are as well. Early reports show that the Kangaroo Point Bridge alone will take nearly 84,000 car trips off other river crossings per year. Each day, over 5,000 trips will be taken across the bridge, rising to 6,300 in 10 years' time. Just last night, I was there for the opening of the International Cycling Safety Conference, the first time that conference has been held in the southern hemisphere. There was 130 enthusiastic cyclists and professional stakeholders from engineers to public health sector that were so excited about our program of future-proofing Brisbane. They had been out yesterday cycling around the city with technical workshops on what we're delivering here in Brisbane, and they loved it. They absolutely loved it. They also loved that we dropped the temperature by 10 degrees from Sunday to what it was yesterday as well. But they were looking forward to three days of immersing themselves in the most progressive city in Australia when it comes to delivering cycling infrastructure. This is what we are about.
Deputy Mayor, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Further questions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor, who has so far refused to answer any questions today from the opposition. The wall of secrecy that opposition councillors have come up against when we have inquired on behalf of the people of Brisbane about contracts awarded to this council's councillors, key management personnel and their families is astounding. Despite your claims to the contrary, this information is not publicly available. Why do you continue to surround LMP councillors and their families with a shroud of silence that prevents ratepayers finding out the truth about these secret contracts? Or will you refuse to answer this question as well?
Lord Mayor.
There they go again. Now, it's not enough to go after LMP councillors with personal attacks, they want to go after their families as well. We just heard this, we just heard this from the leader of the opposition. Now, what is happening here, let's be very clear, is the leader of the opposition is asking questions in a way that would suggest that something untoward has happened. I have seen no evidence whatsoever...
Okay, councillors, allow the Lord Mayor to answer the question. Silence, please.
...of anything happening other than the right thing, the right thing. And I will tell you that LMP councillors have made appropriate declarations and disclosures in accordance with the law, in accordance with the law. They have done the right thing and they have made the disclosures in accordance with the law. What more do you expect councillor Cassidy? What more do you expect? Do you want to smear the families of councillors? Do you want to smear the families of councillors? If you do, I will simply remind you, there is no parliamentary privilege in this place and you may face defamation. Because nothing wrong has happened here, but you are trying to throw mud and go after the families of councillors. I think it is disgraceful. If you have a claim to make, if you have a complaint to make, put up or shut up.
Further questions? Councillor Marks.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of Field Services Committee, councillor Howard.
So, excuse me councillor Marks, yes, point of order councillor.
Thanks. I just wanted to clarify if, from your perspective, it's appropriate for one councillor to tell another councillor to shut up?
Look, I think that in a typical scenario, it would not be. But in a standard interaction, however, 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 that is, that is a well-recognized statement, it's a well-recognized sort of cliched statement that we recognize. So we will, I will return to councillor Marks.
Thank you, Chair. So councillor Howard, can you please update the chamber on what field service is doing to ensure the responsible use of water during this unreasonable dry spell?
Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Chair, and I thank councillor Marks for the question. And Chair, as Brisbane grows, it is council's priority to ensure our city is ready and resilient during times of drought. We achieve this through modeling best practice for sustainable water use as an organization and supporting Brisbane's residents, communities and businesses to do the same. Today, southeast Queensland's combined dam levels are sitting at 59.9%, meaning we have now entered drought response stage. I can provide assurance that the Schrinner administration has proactively begun drought readiness measures and has an action plan to reduce our own water usage over the coming weeks and months. During the last drought, council implemented a wide range of water-smart strategies and successfully reduced our own water use by 70%. Many of these strategies have remained, and we are now confident in our ability to prepare for, live through and recover from droughts. Today, I'd like to speak to the great example field services is setting when it comes to responsible management of water. Field services is already taking, taking action to limit our water usage and use alternate water supplies where we can, where we can, to reduce water wastage. Some examples of the alternative water supplies that we utilize for many of our day-to-day operations include utilizing water directly from the waterways and creeks when watering habitat areas nearby. Field services has access to a 40,000-liter rainwater tank at our Perrin Park depot. At field services' Mount Cotha Quarry, Brakalba Quarry and Pine Mountain recycling facilities, water is harvested and stored in dams for use in dust control and processing. You may be interested to know that the Mount Cotha Dam actually provides some harvested water to the Brisbane Botanic Gardens at Mount Cotha, situated right next door. So water used on-site during road surfacing activities is carted from the asphalt plant's water harvesting storage systems when this is available for dust control. Council's resource recovery centers have significant water tank capacity, up to 100,000 liters at certain sites. This means that we have very little dependence on mains water, and the majority of water used for our operations at our resource recovery centers comes from our on-site water storage systems. We have all seen firsthand the impact this drought is having on our parks and habitat areas across the city, as the dry conditions take their toll on our beloved flora. Field services has carefully planned programs in place to take care of our green spaces and places and ensure that we can continue to protect and expand green space across Brisbane for residents to enjoy. In response to the dry conditions, we have carefully adjusted our tree planting program. This includes limiting the number of trees we are planting during these unfavorable weather conditions, with the plan to review our tree planting schedule in January next year to determine the best time to resume our full tree planting program. We intend to review all other tree planting packages in January 2020 to determine whether we resume the full program based on weather conditions. We are continuing with a limited number of tree plantings where appropriate to ensure that we continue to deliver the projects our residents want and need and bring more shade to our suburbs. Council's Greenest Suburbs program is a great initiative that we are delivering in addition to council's tree planting program that will deliver more shade and greener streets in the suburbs. I know councillor Cunningham was very excited to join residents in October as part of the first community planting event in Greenslopes, and we are taking good care of these trees by providing additional watering and maintenance visits to ensure they establish and thrive for future generations to enjoy. I also know that residents have been excited to engage with their local councillors and our council offices about our Greenest Suburbs project planned for Zylmia, Murray Re, Paddington and Lutwich, with hundreds of residents engaging in our community consultation events and telling us what they want to see in their neighborhoods. So we have a lot of exciting things planned with, with much more to come, and we're looking forward to continuing tree planting as part of this program in the new year, when conditions are more favorable to our fledging new trees. What we are doing in the meantime is making sure our existing trees are well taken care of and able to survive and thrive during these tough conditions. For recently planted trees, we have increased the number of watering and maintenance visits. We have also implemented a number of alternative approaches to minimize our water usage for new plantings or high-profile areas, including utilizing a soil conditioner, which means less water is needed when establishing new plantings. For existing garden beds, we are limiting watering to essential applications.
Councillor Howard, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Shree.
Mr Chair, my question's to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, today, council will vote on the Kangaroo Point Peninsula neighborhood plan. This new plan will increase building heights in the Lambert Street Peninsula compared to the current neighborhood plan, but doesn't offer any new public green space and makes no attempt to complete the riverwalk around the Kangaroo Point riverfront. Are you confident that there is enough public green space in the northern half of the Kangaroo Point suburb to cater for the rapid population growth which your administration is proposing?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question councillor Shree. We know that Kangaroo Point has, and significant parts of Kangaroo Point, including the Kangaroo Point Peninsula, have had elements of high density for a very long time. And in fact, Kangaroo Point was one of the first high-density areas outside of the CBD. This is not something new, and this is something where anyone who claims to know anything about town planning would suggest that high density is appropriate for a place like Kangaroo Point. Now, what we propose in Kangaroo Point is significant and ongoing investment in infrastructure, like the construction of the new Kangaroo Point to CBD bridge, which will provide a real game changer for people living on the peninsula and also people further afield as well. They will go from being on a peninsula to having direct access within a few hundred meters of the CBD at the foot there of Alice Street and Edward Street, and that will be an incredibly attractive piece of infrastructure for people when it comes not only to getting around the city, but also as a lifestyle improvement to the area. Now, when it comes to parkland, we always would like to see increases in parkland, and that's why I established the Green Future Fund, with $20 million in funding this year alone to acquire land for parkland. And we do that in many respects in council. Part of the parkland improvement is done through the LGIP, or the Local Government Infrastructure Plan, which identifies new parks that we would like to see delivered. Part of it is done through enhancement of existing parks.
Point of order, Mr Chair. Point of order to you councillor Shree.
On relevance, the mayor's avoiding the question, it's a simple one of, is there enough public green space in Kangaroo Point for the increasing population?
I disagree. I think the Lord Mayor is answering the question about parkland. Please, Lord Mayor, please continue.
As I was saying, part of it is through upgrades to existing parks to make sure that they are more usable, and we've certainly continued to invest in parkland in places like Kangaroo Point, and we will continue to do so in the future. And then the other part of it is identifying opportunities that might arise to buy additional land for parkland, and that's where opportunities like the Green Future Fund come in. Now, we are constantly looking at opportunities to expand parkland, and I would simply say that if those opportunities come up and they're feasible in a place like Kangaroo Point, then we will have a look at them. And if councillor Shree is aware of any specific feasible options to expand parkland, I am happy to have a look at it. So I'm not going to make a black-and-white statement about whether there is enough parkland in any suburb, because we would always like to see better and more parkland. That's what our focus is, and that's why we're investing more than ever before in expanding parkland. That is why we were converting Victoria Park Golf Course into the biggest new park created in 50 years, and that's why we have the $20 million Green Future Fund that will continue to roll on. And as councillors are aware, we've already made the first acquisitions from the Green Future Fund down in Sunnybank Hills, and councillors are coming to us with suggestions and opportunities to purchase more land for parkland. And it's interesting, we hear the mumbling and the murmuring from over there.
All in LMP areas.
And councillor Griffiths, councillor Griffiths doesn't like us buying new parkland, obviously. He, he just criticizes.
Okay, councillor Griffiths, councillor Griffiths, you've made a few interjections now that have gone unacknowledged. Please, please refrain, please refrain from interjecting unnecessarily, or really at all, Lord Mayor.
But if councillor Griffiths wants to direct his efforts to anything, he would stop the state government selling off land in his area. That would be a good start. He's complaining about what council's doing, but he's not standing up to his state Labor colleagues who want to sell off bushland in his area. So the hypocrisy is breathtaking there. Our record is clear, we will continue to invest in parkland, whether it's improving existing parkland or creating new parkland. And if you go out there to talk to the average person on the street, they know this administration stands for increasing and improving parkland.
The answer will be heard in silence, please. Lord Mayor, have you concluded?
No, thank you. They know the record of this administration, they know the focus of this administration, and I've got to say, congratulations councillor Shree on your latest newsletter. It was a corker. It was an absolute corker. Trying to claim credit for all of Team Schrinner's achievements in your wards? Fantastic, fantastic. You are our biggest fan, according to the latest newsletter, but that's okay, that's okay. We are proud of the things that we are achieving in all wards of the city, including in the Gabbaward.
Further questions? Councillor Landers.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Public and Active Transport and Economic and Tourism Committee, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, last week council announced our Christmas in Brisbane lineup for 2019. Can you please give us an update on what we can expect from the dazzling lights and displays during the month of December?
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I thank councillor Landers for the question. And yes, you might ask, why are we talking about Christmas already? Because it is only 36 sleeps away, can you believe, till Christmas? And Christmas in the city and across Brisbane is going to be bigger this year than ever. The city in particular hives of activity as it is every year, getting families to come in and enjoy the festive season, with more than 250 events in the lead-up to Christmas Day. We know, and the Lord Mayor mentioned earlier today... We know, and the Lord Mayor mentioned earlier today, a lot of families have done it tough this year and a lot of families particularly around the state struggling with drought and of course the recent bushfires as well. I think it's more important than ever for those families who've planned to come into the city, particularly if they're from out of Brisbane, that we come together and we enjoy the festive season. More importantly, I think it's also clear that we need to support our local businesses at this time of the year. We have got hospitality, food and bev, retail stores right across the city that are really, really looking forward to that festive season for people to come in and spend and spend up big. And that is what Team Shreiner is absolutely focused on. It's about making sure everyone has the opportunity to celebrate with their loved ones in the places that make our city great. Of course, the activities throughout December will support that retail economy by attracting those visitors from the wider region. We know last year, more than 750,000 visitors to the events. Events in the city centre support the extended shopping trading hours too and we're very happy to announce the much-loved classic favourites are back this year but with a bit of a twist. The Christmas Tree Lights Up, the Lord Mayor will be there on the 29th of November. Our much-loved tree stands at 22 metres tall and of course becomes the centrepiece of the city. It's always a special moment for those little faces to light up as the tree lights go on for the first time as well. The Gold Lotto City Hall Lights will feature a new Australian animal story by children's author Samantha Wheeler and everyone can enjoy the story of Clarence the Koala and his search for the perfect Christmas gift. The story comes alive every 15 minutes. And of course, there's the annual Christmas parade, an absolute must-see. Hundreds of singing and dancing performers marching merrily through Queen Street Mall. The parade will start from December 13th at 7pm. There'll be new elements, including performing elves, a Polar Express train and new Christmas floats as well. This will be capped off, of course, with the Lord Mayor's Christmas carol to showcase some of Australia's biggest and brightest talents on the 7th of December. 500 performers will bring the River Stage to life with song and dance. Charlie Robinson from Channel 9, I've got 20-year-old twins, Charlie Robinson's from High Five as far as I'm concerned, will host the evening. We saw her in concert for their second birthday, it was a big mosh pit. Families can arrive early and enjoy a picnic before the concert as well. It is a spectacular event for all ages. So there really are so many great events right across the city. Of course, the Enchanted Garden, extremely popular. We encourage everybody to plan ahead for the Enchanted Garden. The lights displaying and illuminating Roma Street Parkland will be back. There is a gorgeous light show at St Stephen's Cathedral, celebration of peace, joy and goodwill. Hundreds of events at South Bank Parklands, obviously live performances, the South Bank markets and even the Lord Mayor's Christmas senior concerts, which we know our mature residents absolutely love in the first week of December as well. Of course, Santa's stable is a programme highlight and it is coming back again this year due to popularity. It's a chance for families to have a photo with the Santas and the elves and of course Santa's deer. So we have Rocky and Radar that are joining the celebrations this year. They can pop up to Radcliffe Place. Rocky and Radar are there for one hour a day over the week that we have the Santa's stable and it is not a petting zoo but it's an opportunity to get into the festive mood where it's just a little bit quieter up in Radcliffe Place as well. It's all about activating our community, getting people out and about and supporting our local economy. It makes a huge difference to our operators over this time of year. A generated spend of estimated $7.1 million from the Christmas programme. That's right, I said it wrong, 7.1 million generated with a total spend of $71.5 million over Christmas. Last year alone, we saw an economic uplift of 55.8 from December 14th to December 23rd. That is nothing to be sniffed at when it comes to our retailers and our hard-working small-to-medium enterprises right throughout the Centre Business District.
Deputy Mayor, your time has expired.
Merry Christmas to all our retailers.
That concludes question time. Councillors, I draw to your attention the consideration of committee reports. Lord Mayor, the Establishment and Coordination Committee, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 11th of November 2019 be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the Deputy Mayor, the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday the 11th of November 2019 be adopted. Is there any debate, Lord Mayor?
Point of order, Mr Chairman. Yes, I'd ask that item A, D, G and I are taken, seriatum for debate and voting purposes and that item G is taken separately for voting purposes.
Okay, I'm going to repeat that to you, that A, D and I are separate for debate and voting. However, G to be separated out again for voting, is that what you're asking?
Yes, so put all the four together for debate.
So separate the four but then once we have that, split them into those two votes at a time?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right, well, excuse me, I just have to, there's quite a few here, A, D, G and I. Lord Mayor, could you please introduce the report and we'll speak to the planning proposals first, please, A, D, G and I first.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Before I move to those particular items, I wanted to address a couple of issues. First of all, there was an interesting question that councillor Adam Allen answered about responsible financial management. And I heard some murmurings from Labor councillors about, oh, you have to deliver a balanced budget. You have to, by law, there's no choice. And I have to say, it has been my consistent advice that council does not have to deliver balanced budgets. There is no law requiring balanced budgets. It might seem that way because we've had 15 balanced budgets in a row, but that is not any kind of requirement other than our requirement for responsible financial management. And you can be sure that if the other side got in, deficits will be coming before you knew it because there is no requirement. But we know that Labor simply can't manage money and they've got no experience in running Australia's largest council. But we've heard some interesting comments on transparency today and it never ceases to amaze me the level, the sheer level of bald-faced hypocrisy that comes from Labor. So they not only content to go after LNP councillors and personally attack them, they now want to go after the family members of LNP councillors apparently. That's what councillor Cassidy said. Now, transparency is one of those things that they claim to support, yet councillor Cumming has not disclosed a single cent that has been spent on his allowance that he received for three and a half years as opposition leader and I don't believe he has any intention of doing so. And I haven't seen councillor Cassidy getting up in outrage and calling on councillor Cumming to disclose what that allowance was spent on. Once again, hypocrisy. And then when it comes to disclosures, I remember on the first day that we found out that Rod Harding had been knifed and replaced with a TV journalist, that TV journalist was asked, will you disclose your personal financial and pecuniary interests? And there was complete surprise and a blank look on the face there and someone said, oh, you don't have to do that. And he's like, oh, I don't have to do that. And so I remember very clearly that the Labor Party required certain other candidates running for office at other levels of government to disclose their personal financial pecuniary interests, even though there was no requirement to do so in the interest of transparency. It seems that we don't have that same standard now with the current candidate who's running for Lord Mayor. Now, we as councillors all have to do that. It is the law and we follow the law. And councillors would know and administration councils would know the great level of concern that we have to make sure everything is done appropriately and that we follow the law and do the right thing and make the appropriate disclosures. We spend a lot of time making sure we've got them up to date. Yet, you know, a candidate who wants to be Lord Mayor and run Australia's largest city is like, oh, don't have to do that. That doesn't apply to me. So there is some double standards here. And then we heard councillor Cassidy harping on about the allowance, yet we heard that he's given two or three different stories about his allowance. What's happening with it? Has he asked for it to stop? Has he paid it back? Or is it sitting in his account? I don't know. There's been three different stories and we do not know. All we know is that he is using this simply as a political issue because they have nothing else. They have no plans, no policies, no agenda for the city, they have no experience and all they have is mudslinging and personal attacks. And you can't run a city on mudslinging and personal attacks. You just can't. Now, Labor councillors have been very interested in the recent state government legislation and this is another example of double standards. Because from yesterday, there have been changes to the way information is released from council committees, including E and C. Now, traditionally at all three levels of government, the cabinet decision-making body has had a level of confidentiality. Now, that confidentiality still exists up at George Street, still exists down in Canberra, but as of yesterday has been removed from Brisbane City Council. And it's interesting because the premier back in October 2017 said, I will not make rules for councils that I am not prepared to follow myself. So any changes we make will apply to the state as well as local government, except for cabinet confidentiality. Now, if you go up to the top of George Street, their confidentiality lasts for 30 years, 30 years. So often it's after governments have long gone and premiers have passed away that that information comes out. Yet they're quite happy to have that system in place for themselves, for a Labor state government, yet a different system at the council level. But I can say, we always do the right thing and we are announcing today that following the confirmation of the minutes of E and C at the next E and C meeting on Monday, we will be releasing those cabinet minutes and they will be put up on AZDEC Docs, which is the electronic system that all councillors have access to. Actually, no, that's not the case, councillor Johnston. Councillor Johnston said we legally have to, no, we don't. What has happened is the cabinet is now subject to right to information, which means that councillors can apply and make a right to information application on cabinet minutes. And you know what we're doing? We're releasing them proactively. Whether people put in an application or not, they're coming out. All councillors will see them. We don't have to do that, but we're doing it. Pity that the same thing doesn't apply up in George Street to the Labor Party state government. So councillors will see the cabinet minutes from within 48 hours of the minutes being adopted in the next cabinet meeting. So as you would be aware, as each council meeting comes in, the first thing we do is we confirm the minutes of the last meeting and there's a vote taken and that's the minutes of the last meeting confirmed. The minute they're confirmed at cabinet in the same way, within 48 hours, we will release them on AZDEC Docs to all councillors. Also, there have been changes made to the City of Brisbane Act in relation to councillor requests for advice and information. These changes, once again, like the cabinet confidentiality matters, have nothing to do with Belkara. They have nothing to do with what the state government says they are all about. But they are all about trying to give Labor some kind of advantage in the lead-up to the next election. A hand up from their state mates.
Councillors, allow the Lord Mayor to be heard in silence, please, Lord Mayor.
Now, if you're a state member of parliament and you're not part of the government, you don't have access to all of the state government files like a councillor does. You don't have that access. You have to ask the minister a question and the minister decides whether they're going to actually even respond to that question or answer that question. There is no obligation at the state level or even the federal level, I understand, for information to be provided to state members of parliament or federal members of parliament. Yet councillors can already get access to the files, it's already there, they can have access to it and that is already a far higher level of transparency than any other level of government. And so that process will continue and we will be updating the requests for advice and information guidelines in accordance with the new changes to the City of Brisbane Act and the legislation that's been brought in. And once again, we're doing the right thing here. And so we can rightly claim that Brisbane City Council is the most transparent, not only council in Australia, but level of government out of all three. We are the most transparent level of government, the most transparent elected body in the country, in the country. And so that is something we should all be proud of. It is a shame that the same level of transparency does not exist elsewhere. But ultimately, we are leading the way here. As I always do, I just wanted to talk about some of the major city council assets and how they're going to be lit up in support of great community causes. So today, the Story Bridge, the Tropical Dome and the Victoria Bridge will be lit up in orange to support Zonta Says No to Domestic Violence. And I know there's a number of councillors who have been involved in that campaign and some of the activities that have happened in recent times in support of that campaign. Zonta does a fantastic job.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension?
Extension of time has been moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by councillor Richards. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Country, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor, please continue.
Thank you. Zonta does a fantastic job in Brisbane and internationally and we've had a number of speakers in the chamber as well from Zonta and we look forward to continuing to support the great work they do. On Thursday, we'll see Brisbane City Hall lit up in blue for the Asia-Pacific Screen Awards. This is a big event for Brisbane when it comes to international profile. These are the major screen awards for the whole Asia-Pacific region. And if you think about the sheer amount of film that is produced in Asia and also in places like India, there is just a massive volume. It's one of the, it's obviously a massive market when it comes to film watchers, but it's also an incredibly large producer of films. And right here this week, we will be having the international awards for the Asia-Pacific Screen Awards. So that is something we should be proud of and certainly something that helps put Brisbane on the map internationally. Also on Thursday, the Story Bridge and Victoria Bridge will be lit up purple to support Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. In Australia, pancreatic cancer has just an 8.7% five-year survival rate, which is absolutely diabolical. So only 8.7% survive five years or more. So that is a very serious and aggressive form of cancer and is projected to be the second-leading course of cancer-related deaths in Australia by 2030. So it's important that we raise awareness of that. Australia's International Summer of Men's Test Cricket kicks off at the Gabba with Australia versus Pakistan for the first of the two test series. So Friday, Saturday and Sunday, we will see the Tropical Dome, Victoria Bridge and Story Bridge lit up in green and gold to support the Aussie test team. So looking forward to that. It was great to be out and about again this week and in particularly great to be with councillor Johnston at the Sherwood Festival. And it was also great to be able to give a commitment, which I will repeat today to provide a higher level of support in terms of funding going forward. It's not an auction, but yeah, look, I acknowledge what a great event it is and the hard work that went into making that possible. And you know, council provides a great level of support across the city to many events. And councillor Johnson rightly pointed out that the level of funding there hadn't changed for a long time and the cost had increased. So happy to have a look at that, as we are happy to have a look at other festivals around Australia as well, no, Australia, around Brisbane as well. In relation to the planning items that you wanted taken together, we have item A, the major amendment to City Plan H. This amendment will change the, this is about the townhouses and apartments in low-density areas. And it's funny because some councillors will remember that in the 2014 City Plan, some councillors made submissions and I remember being berated by the Labor councillors at the time for making a submission saying there should be no townhouses in low-density areas and that parking requirements should be increased. And they berated me for making those comments and... And they berated me for making those comments, and I'm glad that we're bringing this in now, because the planning of the city is something that continues to evolve.
Councillors, please. Lord Mayor.
The planning of the city is something that continues to evolve, and Brisbane's future blueprint and the consultation that occurred at that time was a really important next step in making sure that our planning is as responsive to the community as possible. And I have no doubt it will continue to change in the future. We regularly see amendments to the plan come through, and plans are a living, breathing thing, and so we will continue to see changes going forward based on the changing needs of the community, based on feedback, and also based on the need to provide more housing in Brisbane as our population grows, and different types of housing. But it has long been my belief that low-density should be low-density, and that is exactly what we're putting forward. And it is interesting that the state government seems to be of two minds about this. On the one hand, they've indicated that they might support this going forward, but on the other hand, they seem to be fanning the flames behind the scenes against this. So I don't know how it will come forward in the end, but we will continue to progress with this to make sure that low-density stays low-density. Now, there are plenty of other parts of the city where you can build units or townhouses, and I want to make that point clear. So there's emerging communities, there's low-medium density, there's medium density, and a range of high-density zonings as well. These are areas you can build units and townhouses, but low-density is low-density, and that's what we're doing here with this amendment. And I know that when it came to community consultation, we received 1,423 submissions, including 1,302 properly-made submissions. 731 of the properly-made submissions from within the Brisbane local government area were in support of the proposed amendments. 455 of the properly-made submissions within the local government area were not in support. So there was strong community support, despite a big campaign from certain elements to try and stop this amendment. There was, there were very active groups who are campaigning in favour of townhouses, believe it or not, and so we saw that happening. But the clear view when it comes to the submission here is that the community does support these changes, and we will progress with them on that basis. When it comes to the next one, which is Major Amendment F, this proposed amendment will change overlay mapping and associated provisions to ensure that local heritage places, buildings constructed in or prior to 1911, and key civic spaces and iconic vistas are protected. To ensure the protection and preservation of Brisbane's unique character and identity, 128 new sites are proposed to be added to the heritage overlay mapping. These sites were identified through systematic research and by nominations from the public and other interested people, and the protection of key civic spaces and iconic vistas will ensure that future development does not detract from their visual importance to the city. And that includes Anzac Square, Post Office Square, the General Post Office, or the GPO, and St Stephen's Cathedral. Key civic spaces include Reddick Cliff Place, Queen Elizabeth II Courts, and at the Law Conflict, and also Post Office Square and Admiralty Towers to Public Plaza. We had public consultation from March to April this year, and we received 72 submissions. And the, based on that consultation, we resolved to modify the proposed amendments in response to the submissions and progress the amendments to the state government's for its final review. The minister has endorsed the amendment for it to proceed to adoption and gazette. The TLPIs will be repealed once the amendment is adopted. We have the Kangaroo Point Peninsula Neighbourhood Plan coming through. Obviously, that's not part of it.
Sorry, Lord Mayor, I know I said the planning ones, but E is not included in the list of areas.
Okay.
It's G and I, so E is still a part.
G and I. Okay, I'll move forward to G, Mr Chair. So the G relates to Amendment Package K. The main component of this includes the rezoning of 54 properties through the Emerging Community Zone land audit to be amended from emerging community to low-density residential, and applied dwelling house character overlay as well. These properties were identified through a selection criteria to ensure appropriateness. The selection criteria included sites with no development approval, sites not in a priority development area, sites not in a neighbourhood plan area, sites not heavily constrained by biodiversity, bushfire, coastal hazards, flood, or waterway corridor overlay codes. These changes will deliver on council's commitment to protecting Brisbane's backyard and our unique character by giving effect to the action in the future blueprint that will ensure suburban development fits within its surrounding areas. Amendment K is presented to the chamber to request the first state interest review and seek approval for public consultation. Finally, to item I, the proposed amendment, which is Package J, will ensure that new multiple dwellings in suburban areas provide sufficient onsite car parking spaces to accommodate parking demand. More specifically, the amendment proposes to change transport access and parking and servicing to increase parking rates as follows. Two-bedroom units...
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension.
Extension's been moved by the Deputy Mayor.
Seconded.
Councillor Richards, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor, please continue.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I'm almost done. Two-bedroom units will be required to have two car parking spaces. Three-bedroom units will also be required to have two car parking spaces. Four or more bedroom units will be required to have at least 2.5 car parking spaces. We'll also be increasing visitor parking spaces per unit from 0.15 to 0.25. So these changes form part of our commitment to make sure that we take on board the feedback in the future blueprint consultation. And we had 360 properly-made submissions. Of the properly-made submissions, 244 were in support. So we are progressing this amendment to the minister to undertake the second state interest review and request adoption. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers, excuse me, I'll remind the room that we are debating seriatum on items A, D, G, and I. Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. I'll speak on all of these together, A, D, G, and I, these planning amendments. And it's probably more telling that the Lord Mayor spent, or very telling, the Lord Mayor spent more time talking about Pat Condrin than he did about the business of this council. And he mentioned something that caught my attention, Chair, when he said the...
Now, councillor Cassidy, I trust you, you recognise the rules don't allow you to say whatever you please. Can you please stick to the business at hand?
We know what happens when I say...
You're very quick, you're very quick to ask others to come back to topic, and I expect the same...
And you rarely acquiesce to my request, Chair.
The same standard you ask of others to be held to yourself. Please, councillor Cassidy, continue.
The Lord Mayor said an interesting thing. He said that, he used the term evolve, and this is an evolution of the planning scheme. I think, I think what is more accurate is that the LNP machine did some polling, did some focus groups, and they felt the winds of change coming, Mr Chair. I think the exercise that the Lord Mayor and councillor Burke, what's the term he likes to use, waxes lyrically about, the future blueprint for Brisbane and the Plan Your Brisbane exercise, was a very expensive advertising exercise for this LNP administration. But I think they knew the writing was on the wall when it comes to the disastrous planning decisions they made in 2014, when they did their focus groups, when the LNP did their focus groups and did their private polling, and it said, "Communities all around Brisbane were red, hot, angry at this council, at this Lord Mayor." He might get up in here and try and rewrite this history now and say, "Oh, I argued, I argued against slashing car parking ratios, and I argued to protect low-density residential..." Was he a deputy mayor at the time? Can't have been a very effective one if he was arguing for that at the time. The history shows that this administration, Team Shriner, are the ones that have wrought the damage on Brisbane. All those communities right across Brisbane, when you go out to places in streets around Brisbane, whether it's Halcombe Street in Zilmia, I was there this morning and saw that entire street that has unit developments all down it, completely and utterly parked out. Go to Kingsmill Street in Chermside, just around Burnie Bray, near the Chermside Shopping Centre, that street is parked out 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Streets like Kitchener Street in Cooperoo, Cleveland Street in Stones Corner, Andrews Street in Cannon Hill, of course, all of these streets and streets all around Brisbane are completely and utterly parked out. Some of these streets, you cannot even get an emergency services vehicle down. And what's the solution to that? There is no solution to that, because Adrian Shriner had already got in and made these changes, and those people will be living with that reality for the rest of their lives. So we're glad that the Lord Mayor has finally, finally backed down on some of the decisions that he made in this administration to slash the number of car parks that were required as a result of unit development, but for so many people, Lord Mayor, it is too little too late, and they will remember that on March 28 next year. There is no doubt about that. So we cannot forget who caused these problems. For the last 16 years, this LNP administration has been in power. Now, every time we ask this Lord Mayor or this administration questions about their conduct, whether it's about planning issues or issues of transparency and accountability, or the mounting warts that we see in this administration chair, the Lord Mayor just says, "Oh, it was all Jim Solis' fault." Sometimes he says it was Clem Jones' fault. I'm sure, I'm sure he'll, he'll say it was the mayors of the former, you know, City of Brisbane and the South Brisbane Town Council and the Sangay Town Council, it was all their fault as well. He has never shown the leadership when it comes to these things, and this administration only moved, they only moved when they could see people out in those communities standing there with baseball bats, waiting to punish them at the next election. But again, they're not going to forget that on March 28 next year. And the Lord Mayor says, "Oh, Labour's got no policies, no positive policies." Well, he's lifted the entire Labour planning guarantee from the 2016 election. He didn't need to spend the millions and millions of dollars on the Plan Your Brisbane exercise. They already had the answers because they did their focus groups and their private poll in the LNP. But had they actually been out there listening to people? I can tell you, during the 2016 election and each and every year after that, I know the feedback I was getting from constituents in my area when unit developments were going up waved through as a result of decisions that Lord Mayor Adrian Shriner made in the City Plan 2014, that those car parking requirements weren't high enough. Those people have been, you know, whether it was Barbara down in Gilly Street in Zilmia, when she would ring the office constantly, say, "There's another unit development happening here." This is a person who's lived in that same street for decades and decades, and can fundamentally see the fabric of that community changing. Now, change, change can be difficult for some people. When it is managed right and managed appropriately, and appropriate development controls are put in place, that can be a positive outcome for a community. But when it comes to this LNP council, who were addicted, addicted to developer donations... Oh, they didn't like that. Got to rise out of one on there. They don't get them anymore, that's for sure. That's for sure.
Okay, councillor Cassidy, keep moving, please. Keep going.
Yeah, that's right. Unless they win the next election, then it'll be open slather for developer donations once again, Chair.
Okay, thanks, mate. Back to the topic at hand, please.
So, so when it came, when it came to development in this city, under this LNP administration, who was addicted to developer donations, it was Rafferty rules, Rafferty's rules, when it came to units and townhouses. The development industry said, "We want less car parks in the unit developments we are building." And the LNP, Adrian Shriner, said, "Sure." City Plan 2014, "Sure, sure." And they said, "We want to go higher and more dense." And they said, "Sure. Tell us how high and how dense. Tell us how few car parks you want to build in these unit developments in suburbs and far-flung places of Brisbane." And they would give them more than they even asked for, Chair. So these issues are coming home to roost. The people of Brisbane should not be fooled that this administration is somehow saving the backyard, saving the backyard that they have systematically destroyed for years and years and years. They are claiming now that they're going to save the suburban street by requiring developers to put more car parks in unit developments. Well, that is of cold comfort to those residents living in those streets that have been ruined, and those communities now that have been ruined. When it comes to item D, with the pre-1911 character protection, again and again and again, we've been calling on this administration to do a full audit of Brisbane's pre-1911 character properties, and each and every time, we request that very simple thing, to properly resource an audit of pre-1911 homes that are continuing to fall through the cracks, that are continuing to be bulldozed by developers all around this city. They refuse. And they come in here today and say, "We're acting on this, and we're protecting Brisbane's character." I mean, this is a joke, Chair, when it comes to really acting on these issues. This is all about this administration scrambling to the next election, trying to save some face. But again, I say, the people of Brisbane really won't forget who inflicted this pain on them in the first place. We will, of course, be supporting these items, Chair, but again, it is too little too late.
Further speakers, councillor Mackay.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on item A, Major Amendment to City Plan Package H. I start by asking a simple question, Chair. How good is Fig tree pocket? Well, it's amazing. Let's just ask local resident David, who came to see me in the ward office last week, Chair. He had very fond things to say about the local park, Byambe Yumba, where we just had the Jackaranda Festival a few weeks ago. It was fantastic. Chair, the fact that the kids can play in the local parks is fantastic. The Gangani Kindergarten and all of the other local schools down in Fig tree pocket are thriving because of one...
Yeah, councillor Mackay, I'm going to have to ask you to come to the topic, please.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Because of one fact, and that is that this Lord Mayor has a plan for the future which includes preserving Brisbane's backyards and its unique character. So I'll just take you back, Chair, to the Brisbane Future Blueprint, where more than 100,000 residents had their say. That's more than one in five households, and every suburb participated. There was a plan developed with eight principles to guide how decisions would be made to create a friendly and livable city. That would include creating a city of neighbourhoods, protecting and creating green space, and others, but most importantly for me, protecting the Brisbane backyard and our unique character. Now, Chair, the Lord Mayor has a vision for the kind of Brisbane we want to create for the future generations. So what I did, Chair, was letterbox dropped thousands of homes in Fig tree pocket and Chapel Hill. And I told the residents that now was the time for them to have their say about Major Amendment H, the restricting townhouse developments in low-density residential areas. And guess what, Chair? Hundreds and hundreds of people throughout Fig tree pocket, Chapel Hill, and other low-density residential areas in Walter-Taylor had their say, and they were overwhelmingly supportive of what the Lord Mayor has planned. So I commend this item to the chamber, and thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Johnston.
Well, yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. I rise to speak on all four items before us today. Now, for those councillors who weren't here in 2014, we had a week-long debate about City Plan 2014. I remember it, and I participated significantly, as did a number of other Labour councillors who were here at the time, and some that have gone. And during this debate, the LNP administration, led by then-chairperson councillor Amanda Cooper, and then-deputy chairperson of planning, now-deputy mayor of the city, Christa Adams, and the Lord Mayor of the city now, and the then-deputy mayor of the city then, got up and extolled the virtues of City Plan 2014 over and over and over again. All reasonable amendments were refused. There were, I put many up at the time, I spoke on concerns about the cuts to parking ratios, the loss of protections for character homes, the lack of notification for residents, and all of these things gleefully, the LNP administration pushed through, using their massive majority. And since that time, for the past five years, every single thing that I raised and other councillors raised in that debate has absolutely come to fruition. The code bombing of the city... The code bombing of the city, that was the word that came out of that week-long debate, is clear to every single person in this city. Every resident knows that they no longer have a say in 90% of DA's that come forward for consideration by this council because of the changes made by this LMP administration. They were wrong. The damage that they have done to this city over the past five years with these bad planning changes has caused catastrophic, catastrophic impacts on the suburbs that I represent and in other places in the city. And that damage can never be undone. Parked-out streets is, is one of the smallest impacts. We've got huge five-story buildings because our neighbourhood plan was altered to remove the GFA and height requirements. My other neighbourhood plan was abolished altogether and put into a giant area of about eight suburbs, which includes all councillor Griffith suburbs. I mean, it was appalling, appalling. And there is absolutely no question that whatever polling they did a couple of years ago put the fear of God into the LMP because there are angry residents all over Brisbane. And I can tell you, Walter Taylor Ward, the former councillor for Walter Taylor, Julian Simmons, cut and ran as quick as possible because of the damage done under his watch as the planning chairperson as well. Whole suburbs in this city have been wrecked by the pro-development attitude of this administration. And let me say, trying to put a Band-Aid on open-heart wound is just not good enough. Do you know what we're doing today with the car parking ratios in, I think, Package J? We're going back to what it was in 2014. So for all the journalists in the room who weren't here either, this is the same ratio that was in place, that these people said was hopeless, had to go, and they put this new one in and they stand up and say how they're protecting our streets. They're going back to what we had and they knew five years ago that it wasn't enough. It wasn't enough. Every day I've got residents who complain to me, who are in these units, that they've got nowhere to park. I've got another one came in yesterday. They've got nowhere to park and it is not good enough, absolutely not good enough, that all you are doing is, you're not even undoing the damage of five years ago, you're just making a slight sort of correction. That's it. And it's not enough. So I honestly don't, I cannot believe that the media, to be fair here, are out there praising or portraying this as some great initiative of the LMP. This is a massive backflip to redress a massive mistake that they made five years ago. It should never have happened. And if you were here or read that debate from 2014, you would know that I and other councillors from the Labour Party who were here fought this botched city plan tooth and nail. Now, let me say the following. The changes in item A only protect a few outer suburban LMP areas. Already, there is a ban on townhouses in low-density areas under the existing city plan rules for blocks of less than 3,000 square metres. So I love that, I love that the new councillor for Walter Taylor went out and told all his residents that there was going to be this new ban when there's already a ban in place in suburbs like his for blocks under 3,000 square metres. So the only place this ban is going to help is out in, outer suburbs where there are huge blocks of land, and they are LMP areas. The damage in my ward has been done by this administration allowing units to be attached to the back of character houses in low to medium-density areas. And the damage that has been done to the middle-ring suburbs through the poor judgement of this administration and the poor planning outcomes of this administration is appalling. Certainly with respect to Package F, it is not good enough that we continue to see a piecemeal approach to protecting our character homes. Just two weeks ago, another gracious, I'd say 120 or 130-year-old home, colonial home at 583 Oxley Road, Corinda, was knocked down. And I couldn't believe it. I drove past one day and it was there, they drove past the next day and it's gone. It's stunning. It was a stunning home. And guess what? It was actually an LMR area, so it didn't have any character protection. Now, I've moved multiple motions in this place to protect it and this administration has failed to act on that. It is absolutely unacceptable that they stand up now and say they want to champion character. It's not good enough. All pre-46 and pre-1911 homes in this city must be protected. And every time the LMP vote against this, more homes are being lost. They're lost every day in my area. To give you another example of how this council likes to protect Brisbane's backyards, 748 Sherwood Road, Sherwood, the residents and I objected to a gracious character house being carved up and its backyard chopped off for a small lot block. Thankfully, council did refuse the DA. But guess what? Went to appeal, council rolled over in the appeal, leaving the resident who joined the appeal to fight the developer on his own. Now, two weeks ago, it's all right, two weeks ago, he stuck with it all the way and he got a good outcome. Not because this council helped him, not because this council defended its decision to refuse, refuse the application, because a single Brisbane resident and his local councillor fought to protect our city's heritage. This council didn't help. And the reason that this can be done is because this council allows blocks to be split and chopped up and Brisbane backyards are being lost. Now, I just want to say a few words briefly about Package K and the Sikkia. The Sikkia was released the week that Graham Quirk, I don't know, retired. And I don't think there was a single bit of media about it. Took off, yeah, thank you. I don't think there was a single bit of media about it. I absolutely do not support the Sikkia and I do not support this council's plans to undertake changes that are proposed in, in the city plan amendments today. Here are some of the things that council wants to put into the city, in the Sikkia. Now, that's a strategic inner-city industrial area. I have one in Yorongah. They want to encourage increased hours of operation for industry in appropriate locations. That means presumably 24-hour operations where you adjoin residential areas, and that is unacceptable. That means heavy trucks, vehicles, noise, and I do not agree. Second one council wants to, enable increased allowable building heights for industry that complements technological advancements in manufacturing or warehouse operation. Now, guess what that means? Giving these people and developers extra height in areas where they should not be going higher. I don't support that. What is the point of a city plan? What is the point of having height controls, having hours of operations? It's there to protect residents. And it is not okay that in, in the shadow of Graham Quirk taking off, that this administration wants to push through 24 hours of operation in suburban industrial areas, higher building heights in suburban industrial areas, and guess what they want to do? Cut parking ratios in, in inner-city industrial areas. That's the next one on the list of the Sikkias. And I can tell you now, the impact of intensifying development in these inner-city industrial areas, and I'm talking about mine in Yorongah, where you have industrial on one side of the road and residential on the other.
Councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise this afternoon to speak on item A. And I think it's important that we actually clarify some falsehoods that have been spoken here tonight. And I will firstly start with the fact that the current deputy mayor was actually the Chair of Lifestyle, not the Deputy Chair of Neighbourhood Planning at the time when we were debating the city plan. Who inflicted it in the first place? Well, this was inflicted by the Australian Labour Party as part of City Plan 2000. And let me clarify that, yes, the outer suburbs will benefit by more certainty for residents, particularly in the emerging community areas. But where are those actual emerging community areas predominantly? Out on the southwestern corridor, they fall in two Australian Labour Party wards and one LMP ward, being the Forest Lake Ward, covering the areas of Duland Della, the Marooka Ward, covering the area of Polara and Willawong. And I still have some areas in my ward of Calumvale, being in Stretton and Calumvale, where there are a substantial number of blocks over 3,000 square metres. But the interesting thing about all these parking comments as well, where is the state government parking rides? There is this urban sprawl that has eventuated as a result in that southwestern corridor of the former premier, Anna Bly, determining that we would have growth in the Oxley Wedge. And where is the state government infrastructure to meet that public transport need? It is non-existent. So, Mr. Chair, I rise to speak tonight about the positives of this amendment, particularly in relation to many of my residents who have raised their concerns with me about emerging community, the large acreage blocks which are contained within my ward, and their concern for the many infrastructure and impacts and issues that they foresee will result if this amendment does not proceed today. Now, I know that many of my residents in Stretton have been there for a considerable period of time. Some of them even have the sales brochures for when the estate was entirely developed in the first place. And I go back even further, and I can remember when the entire suburb of Stretton was actually a horse-riding school many, many years ago, and Compton Road was a two-lane road with gravel beside either lane. But what is important is the residents across the city want certainty for what is going to happen in emerging community zones and in areas surrounding low-density residential. I think every councillor in this place would recognise the fact that a family home is the most significant investment any family would ever make. It is very important to people that then, when they make a choice to purchase a family home in a particular area, that they have that capacity to know that the residential amenity will remain, but also that they will be surrounded by like-for-like. They want to live in a residential community, particularly out in the suburbs. For those people who choose to live in the CBD, in apartments, that is their choice and that is fantastic for their choice. But when we are looking at low-density residential zones, we have to understand that for those residents, that is a particular lifestyle that they value and respond to in our city of Brisbane. Our city is not black and white. It is many colours. There are many needs and many people have differences of what they want out of their local community. The people who live in a community know it best and residents' feedback in this process is important. I know many of my residents in Stretton, in Calumvale, in Parkinson, have expressed their concern to me about the impact of the 3,000-square-metre regime. And I am pleased to see in the schedule of amendments, at Amendment Nine, that it actually now says that development will be maintained in low, will maintain the low-density character in which multi-dwellings are, multiple dwellings are not accommodated. Full stop. No other conditions, no other addendums. Multiple dwellings are not accommodated in a low-density character area. And I think that what is most important about today is that this gives my residents certainty. It gives residents of surrounding wards certainty. Amendment 12 refers to the Alchester-Parkinson-Stretton neighbourhood plan. Amendment 54 refers to the Lower Oxley Creek South neighbourhood plan. Amendment 91 refers to the Willawong neighbourhood plan. There are all of these areas that are the key growth suburbs in the southwest corridor of our city. That is why this amendment is important. That is why that all of those people that are currently buying into new suburbs like Heathwood, like Polara, have the knowledge that going forward, that if they buy a property that is zoned low-density, that they will be surrounded by similar development. Our city does not stand still. Our city is evolving. It has gone through a metamorphosis from a quiet, sleepy country town, as many of our interstate neighbours would refer to us, as being now a new world city. So we have to change with the changing times. We have to recognise the different needs as they come through. But I know personally that this was an issue back in the late 1990s. I know personally that when I came into this council chamber as a public speaker back in the late 1990s, and I raised the concerns about the local area outline plans that the Australian Labour Party introduced at that time, that it was just brushed off. The community was not listened to then. And that was the catalyst for why I am here today. Because I know my community that I have lived in deserves better. They deserve the Brisbane of tomorrow to be better than the Brisbane of today. They deserve to have their feedback and their needs for the community taken into consideration. That is what this amendment does. It has taken into account the emerging community. It has taken into account the development that is happening as the community is spreading across our city and to our city boundaries. But we also need to acknowledge that it is about the investment that people make in their homes and in their community. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Shree.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I rise to speak on the items before me. I wore t-shirt and shorts today because I thought it was like 30 degrees outside, but it's really cold in here. Has anyone else noticed in that?
I think it's really nice.
You're in a three-piece suit, you're fine. So, yeah, I'm going to be abstaining from, from these items because I support some elements of the changes and I oppose other elements of the changes. For anyone who's following along at home or trying to get a head around what's proposed here, on one level, these are fairly small, tokenistic changes. They're largely tinkering around the edges of a broken planning system. On, on another level though, some of the changes are quite dramatic and I think a lot of residents, when they do eventually work out or learn down the track the ramifications of what's being voted on here to get today, they're going to be quite shocked and disappointed that they didn't have a more meaningful say, particularly around things like some of the changes regarding the industrial, the inner-city industrial designation changes. There's a lot in there that I don't think there has been enough public consultation around and I don't think residents are really aware of, of what that, what that's going to do to some of their communities. I think more generally though, what these changes show is a failure of this administration and a failure of city planning in general to grapple with the fact that when development is led by the private sector, the community is, and the needs of the community are deprioritised in the pursuit of greater profit. And so now this administration is tripping it over itself to try and accommodate the frustrations of residents and still try and do a good job in terms of planning, all the while unable to rein in the, the profit-driven developers who are making changes to our city without considering the long-term community interest and without considering, without even us as, as opposition councillors having any meaningful say in the process. I think particularly the debate around townhouses and density and low, low-density areas has been a little bit disappointing because I think it's lacked nuance and hasn't really grappled with the challenges we're facing. The, there are a lot of people who have been commenting publicly that actually we do need to support medium-density and some low-density parts of the city, and I do tend to agree. I think... I think the particular way that density has been delivered and the particular design of some of the townhouses we've seen in the last few years has been pretty disappointing and quite appalling, in my view. But I think we should be, I'm quite cautious of us adopting a rhetorical stance of, oh, we have to just say no to all density in suburbia. Because actually, some of those low-density areas do need to densify. And it would be more sustainable to support them to transition towards mixed-use, low-to-medium-density neighbourhoods, rather than to just keep them as low-density suburban sprawl dormitory suburbs. And it's a shame that there hasn't been a more robust acknowledgement of the fact that suburban sprawl is not sustainable. And it is not sustainable for everyone to live 30, 40, 50 minutes' drive from their place of work and to be stuck in traffic congestion several hours a day. We actually need to be talking about decentralising development and transport networks in our cities so that people are living closer to where they work and that they have more services and community facilities in their local area. There's a really big difference between driving to a mega mall three or four suburbs over or driving to a really large library and community centre three or four suburbs over, as opposed to having a local library and community centre within walking distance or being able to use local shops and services that are within walking distance. And I don't think our current city plan gets that balance right. And I don't think these changes get that balance right either. I think it's been really disappointing to me that this administration seems to be flip-flopping a little bit on some important issues, on some important issues rather than leading and having a meaningful conversation with the public about what forms of densification are actually sustainable. But even more concerning is the failure to recognise that when we leave the provision of housing up to the private sector, low-income residents are always going to miss out and public services and infrastructure are always going to fall short of population growth. Because property developers do not care about the long-term livability of the communities they're delivering. There are a few rare exceptions. There are some who are in it for the long term and actually still have a stake in the projects long term. But most property developers don't actually care what that community is going to be like to live in 20, 30, 40 years down the road. And we see that in the design, we see that in the way these packages are brought forward. And unfortunately, this council is not doing a good enough job of reining in that profit motive. So to be clear, I am supportive of some medium-density in some parts of suburban Brisbane. I think it's a shame that what we have here today is essentially a one-size-fits-all approach, particularly around those car parking requirements. Councillor Johnston was right, for anyone who's following at home, that a lot of these changes are essentially undoing changes that were made a few years ago. But I really think we need to have a more nuanced conversation about car parking ratios. Because yes, there are some areas of the city where there's not enough off-street parking being provided. But there are other areas of the city where if you keep forcing developers to provide more and more parking, that simply encourages people to own more vehicles and increases traffic congestion. And in fact, in some parts of my ward, I was actually arguing that we need to be reducing parking requirements, particularly around south Brisbane where the train stations are. Because we don't want people to be owning multiple vehicles and to be driving everywhere as their main mode of transport. And I know it's different in different parts of the city and different suburbs. But the problem is that these rules don't take account of those local variations. They are one-size-fits-all rules that ordinary residents have had very little say in. And to be quite frank, I don't think most residents actually understand the changes that are being made. And I think that's problematic from a planning process because we need to be actively involving residents in decisions about the future of their city, rather than just saying, oh, you complained about this, so now we're making a change over here, without actually explaining any of the details. So I, yeah, I'm not supportive of some elements. I'm obviously supportive of some of the others, such as the heritage protection. And it's good to see that Lamb House, that protection for Lamb House is still moving forward. But overall, I'm just really disappointed that this administration is not taking a more democratic approach to planning and is not taking a more evidence-based approach to planning. I think there's a better way to do this. I think moving beyond the notion that everyone should be, that, moving beyond the notion that housing should be treated as a commodity, I think is the first step in this process. Housing was once conceptualised as a human right. But now that we treat housing as an investable commodity and wealth is locked up in housing, that's resulting in suboptimal design outcomes, it's resulting in suboptimal planning outcomes. And it's meant that an entire generation is being locked out of the housing market. I was interested to hear the previous speaker talk about the home as an investment. And for my generation, a lot of people, the idea of owning a home is, like, that's a pipe dream. That's literally a pipe dream. And this administration, for all its rhetoric about increasing supply, is not actually doing anything meaningful to improve affordability for people on lower incomes and for younger people. We know that leaving housing up to the private sector doesn't improve affordability for people on lower incomes. And certainly, these changes aren't going to do anything to improve that out either. I'd also like to see more detailed conversations about the the specific design features of those medium-density developments. Because often, the problem is not with townhouses themselves, but that they don't have enough public green space, that they don't have enough setbacks, and they don't connect well to services and infrastructure facilities. So rather than these one-size-fits-all rules, we need to be having a nuanced conversation about what kinds of designs are appropriate and acceptable and how we can ensure that infrastructure meets population growth, rather than just making ad hoc changes without enough public consultation and without residents having a meaningful say.
Further speakers? Councillor Murphy.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair, and I rise to speak on Item A and Item I. Before I do that, I just want to reflect on some of the comments made by Councillor Cassidy earlier in the debate. He used some very, what I would say is very strong language around the outcome of City Plan 2014. Now, let's not forget, City Plan 2014 came into effect five years ago. Our city was founded in 1824. He literally said that City Plan 2014 has destroyed our city. I mean, that is the kind of hyperbole that we hear from the leader of the opposition in Brisbane City Council in 2019. It's just ridiculous. It's untrue. We wouldn't say it of a Labor administration, their policies. No, 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 no. No, we've never said that, Councillor Johnson, we don't. But, but.
Okay, all right, councillors, please.
I just think.
Councillor Johnson, please.
I just think it shows.
Councillor Murphy to speak.
I think it shows a massive lack of a sense of history about him in this place when he talks about planning changes. And I think that denigrates his own office to his detriment. Now, I want to talk about two of the most highly anticipated outcomes from the Planning Brisbane process. Let's also just recap on Planning Brisbane first. Now, Planning Brisbane engaged over 100,000 Brisbane residents in its process. We had over 270,000 individual actions. So when they say that we only consulted with a couple of people or a smattering here and there, let's not forget, 270,000 people in a city of just over a million people. That is a significant number of people that we took, we took on a journey with what is a very dry topic, city planning. And we have won the Urban Developers Excellence in Community Engagement Award as a result. We've gone on to win several more awards. So Planning Brisbane is now a multi-award-winning process. So, you know, I don't really want to take lectures from, they say that we conducted some sort of perfunctory consultation to ram through these changes. These are the changes that the residents of Brisbane were asking us to make, and we are now making them. I think this process shows that we didn't go into the conversation with any kind of preconceived notion of what it would be. This is unlike the Labor Party with their crooked Lady Salento poll, where they had the outcome ahead of the poll, they conducted it and rigged the results. Everything was on the table, including the amendments that you see in front of you today. And we were very happy to hear things that were unpopular with those in the development community. And two of the items that are on the table today were fiercely debated within the development community, fiercely debated. And certainly, I know many councillors here in this place have received representations from that community about these changes. Many don't think that this is the right approach that we are taking here today, many do. But what's important is that this administration takes community consultation seriously. For us, it really matters. And the feedback that we have received through that process, we have acted upon. So out of Planning Brisbane, as you know, we generated Brisbane's Future Blueprint, which is our eight principles and 40 actions, which are guiding now the greatest era of community-driven planning reform in recent times in this history. Under Protect Your Brisbane's Backyard principle, we are taking a number of actions and two of those we are debating here today. Item A, which is ensuring development fits in with the surrounding community by auditing emerging community land, stopping townhouses and apartments from being built in areas designed for single homes. And Item I, which is adjusting the car parking ratios. Firstly, on Item A, this is the infamous 3,000-square-metre rule, which I have previously said in this place was very little understood by the general public, was taken advantage of by developers to accumulate land parcels to get their 3,000 square metres, which would then allow them to jam in townhouses where they were not wanted by the community and where there was no prior knowledge that townhouses could go in there. This rule unfairly overrode neighbourhood plans, which are all about giving the community say on how development occurs in their area. This was also a Labor Party policy, as we have heard in this place. And we are very proud to be changing this Labor Party policy here today. We heard a lot of rubbish from Councillor Cassidy about how they had won a great victory on planning in 2016. At the 2016 election, they won a great victory on planning, apparently, causing us to change, to bring in all these changes. But let's not forget that residents overwhelmingly rejected the Labor Party at the 2016 election. They lost two additional seats. So if this was their referendum on planning, then they lost it, didn't they? So let's not have a reinvention of history around this issue. The Labor Party's planning policy at that election was to establish 26 people's committees around the city, which each councillor would chair, would choose the people that would be on those people's committees. And those people's committees were going to decide on individual development applications in those wards. And you can imagine the types of people that the Labor Party would have put on those people's committees. Would have been filled with anti-development people, union hacks, Green Left weirdos. There would have been all kinds of weird and wonderful collections of people. Not town planning professionals, not people who you could rely on to go, well, you know, we don't like how that looks, but ultimately, our opinions don't override private property values. That was their policy, and the residents of the city of Brisbane rejected it utterly. It was a bad policy. That was your planning approach at the 2016 election, Councillor Cassidy, and they didn't vote for it. Now, let's, let's, let's talk about Item I. This is, this has been very controversial since it was introduced in 2014. And I think it's very true to say that we got it wrong on car parking ratios in City Plan 2014. The ratios which we introduced at the time were 1.1 for a two-bedroom multi-unit dwelling, 1.3 for a three-bedroom multi-unit dwelling, and 1.3 for a four-bedroom multi-unit dwelling, and then 0.15 for visitor car parking ratios. Now, I think it's important to remember the context of the city in 2014. This was a new era for Queensland at the time. We had an LMP state government in office. Public transport fares had been slashed by 15, by 15% after years and years of 15% fare increases under the Bly government when Transport Minister Anastasia Palache was calling the shots. In those first few years, we saw record growth in public transport patronage. The trains actually ran on time. You could look at a timetable and you could say reliably that the train was going to show up when it said it would. And it was with a level of confidence.
Point of order, Councillor Strunk.
Just on relevance, I don't know where the councillor's coming with this, but it has nothing to do with the package.
No, thank you, Councillor Strunk. Councillor Murphy, please make the point that you're.
Through you, Mr Chair, I'll show Councillor Strunk what I'm talking about. Because what I'm saying is that it was with a level of confidence in the city's public transport network that we set about, what we can now say was a fairly ambitious programme to reduce the minimum requirements for car parking in multi-unit dwellings. Sadly, in January next year, the next year, we saw the Palache government take power and usher in the bad old days of public transport in our city once again. We have had a rail fail which has lasted over 1,000 days. We have had massive cost blowouts and delays on their signature public transport project for Brisbane, Cross River Rail. We have had four years of delays in Brisbane Metro.
Councillor Murphy, I appreciate all of these facts, but could you go back to the car parking ratio for me, please?
Sure. And the point that I'm trying to make, Chair, is that it was a very different time in 2014 when we passed these old car parking ratios. And, and you could rely on public transport in our city, and that situation has changed very badly in the recent years. So thus, I think it's fair to say that the changes we introduced today, the changes that we're voting on today, do not reflect an optimistic view of public transport planning in our city. I think they review, I think they reflect the reality. The reality in which capital investment from the state government in our transport network is at its lowest point since 2007, the year that the first iPhone came out. I think, I agree with Councillor Shree, I will say, Chair, that urban sprawl is not sustainable. But if urban sprawl is the macro-planning problem, then congested, parked-out streets is the micro-planning problem. And that is the planning problem which this amendment seeks to address and which this administration has listened to the people of Brisbane on. Unless public transport is fast, reliable, and affordable enough for residents, they will continue to own two cars per household, sometimes even more. So I think these amendments are grounded in that reality. And thus, we are seeing an increase in the ratios for two, 1.1 to 2, 1.3 to 2, 1.3 to 2.5, and then an increase from 0.15 to 0.25 in the visitor car parking ratios. These are significant increases. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Richards.
Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Councillor Richards, seconded by Councillor Marks. This council now adjourn for the purpose of afternoon tea for a period of 15 minutes, commencing when all councillors have left the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye? The contrary, no? The ayes have it. The contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Welcome back everybody, are there any further speakers? councillor Strunk.
Thank you mister Chair, so I rise to speak on portions of A, A, D, G and I amendments. Let me first start my comments in regards to the low residential areas that are now going to be protected against the townhouses. I didn't really have a full understanding until today's debate in regards to the City Plan 2000, City Plan 2014 and all that entailed. But suffice it to say, listen, yeah Labour has to own the 2000 City Plan and the LMP has to own the 2014 City Plan. I don't think you can sort of blame Labour for what you did in 2014 because you had every opportunity to change the 2000 plan and make it your own and now you've got to own it. And now that you want to change it or reverse some of that plan in 2014 to this year, 2019, well, fine, that's good, glad to see some of that happening. Yes, we did sort of campaign about some of that in 2016 and it's great to see that you've seen the sense of the Brisbane ratepayers and I believe, of course, you did probably some surveying to find that out. It was good that you've done it. But it's still a little bit confusing, I suppose, to some of my ratepayers because whereas they understand what low residential is, but there's four different categories of low residential or there is a new one which I believe has maybe been added, I know it's called very low residential, which allows for up to five houses on a hectare. But then there is the other low residential as well, which allows 12 units of accommodation per hectare and then there's one that allows 16 dwellings per hectare and then another one which allows 25. So I just don't know which low residential areas that you are protecting. And I think it's probably certainly nothing to do with the multiple dwelling low residential area, but again, it's a bit confusing and, you know, planning is complicated, as I'm finding out. It's something that I struggled with when I first sat down, put my feet under the chair and had one of our residents from Duandella come in and say, "Listen, the neighbourhood plan in Duandella is not being adhered to." And then I tried to get my head around all that as to why it's not being adhered to. But suffice it to say, it's all about the big enclaves of townhouses, developments, complexes that were being built at the time and continue to be built to this very day in those emerging community areas, Duandella and Ellen Grove. And the changes here really aren't going to protect that at all, there's going to be more and more and more of them. And of course, the residents, it's common, any time I go out to a community gathering, I'll always have people ask me about townhouses and the fact that they don't like them. And it's not the fact that they don't like some townhouses, because some townhouses make sense and they're quite attractive actually and they're nice places to live. But when you have a big complex of 300, anywhere from 100 to 300, that's what they don't like. So they're not going to let me forget it and they won't forget it at the ballot next year either, I can assure you, because they keep talking to me about it all the time. I even had a group in here touring today and we met up at the Red Cross Cafe afterwards and guess what they were talking about? And I didn't have to prompt them at all. There you go. Anyway, so it's interesting, if I have a look at the neighbourhood plan of Duandella, there is a couple of things that sort of stood out to me in regards to the map, the coloured map, and one was what had actually transpired in the space that was allocated for low-density residential, multiple dwellings. And in some of that area, which is coloured red, there is now a service station, McDonald's, 7-Eleven and some other commercial stuff in there, there is no residential at all. So I just don't get my head around that one, how that was able to happen, but who knows? I mean, I think we needed that infrastructure in that area and that was fine. I didn't have a problem with it being over on the corner of Blunder and Crossacre, but it's just really interesting that the map doesn't reflect actually what actually happened, that's just recently happened in that space. So as I say, Bill, you know, planning is quite complicated, I continued to try to get my head around it, even went to the extent of having a part-time person working in my office that's just finishing off a city planning degree, fourth year student, just to help me along with the changes that come down from time to time and the amendments that you put forward. So I just want to also say in regards to the parking, well, the allowable parking spaces in some of these complexes, now you're reversing some of that that was brought down in 2014. But I can assure you, door knocking at Government Road, the new complex is at Government Road, again, one of these major, major complexes of hundreds of units, I can assure you that the 2.5 car park spaces are going to be allowed per unit of, say, four bedrooms is certainly not enough. You only have to look out on the road at night time to see that there is people living in these shared, and they're using this shared accommodation, they all have cars, so sometimes up to four cars, and it's really, it's not really working. And I know you've increased what developers have to do to 2.5 for, say, these four-bedroom townhouses, but there is literally virtually almost no guest parking within these complexes. I don't know how someone has a visitor or a couple of visitors come over, because there's just no space for them as well. So they're, again, out on the road and consequently, first thing of the morning, that Government Road is really just parked from one side to the other side, all the way down to the hotel, and it's really unsafe for two cars to pass with car parking on both sides. But, and the road hasn't even been upgraded, it's still a rural road. So they were allowed to build this complex, they put Kerb and Cheltenham on one side, it's still rural on the other side. Eventually that will probably change because of development happening on the other side. But really, we've just got to do better with this planning. My constituents just are amazed what developers can get away with and, as I say, they keep talking to me about it all the time and I'm sure their vote in this coming election in March 28th will probably reflect a lot of that. Thank you, mister Chair.
Further speakers? councillor Cunningham.
Chair, I rise to speak briefly on item I, amendment to City Plan Package J. As councillor for Cooperroo, a popular and growing part of town in inner Brisbane, I'm very supportive of these changes. Residents have raised with me their desire to see more parking included in multiple dwellings and ultimately help find a better balance for on-street parking. My community's accessibility to the city makes it an attractive place for commuters to drive to and jump on the busway or train, whether that be at Greenslopes, Langlands or Cooperroo. There are parts of my ward that are employment hubs as well, attracting additional car parking during business hours. Commuters and visiting cars are in addition to the local resident vehicles. These local cars belong to people who choose to live in apartments close to public transport but who also need flexibility of owning their own car. So I was pleased to see the state government also support this change. Along with investing in better transport like metro, we need them to get on board with other public transport infrastructure to help further ease congestion like the eastern busway. So I commend team Shrunna for bringing about these changes. Thank you.
Further speakers? councillor Cumming.
Thanks, mister Chair, just a few brief facts which no one else has mentioned, I think. My understanding is that townhouses have been allowed in what used to be called rezai, now low-density residential, for decades, for decades. They were actually, the original area of land required for townhouses was some 10,000 square metres and then later on it was reduced to 5,000 square metres and subsequently to 3,000 square metres. It existed during the whole of the Atkinson administration between 1985 and 1991 and there was no attempt then to get rid of it. It was part of the city plan at that stage as well, so no one's mentioned that, so I just thought I'd mention it.
Further speakers? councillor Atwood.
Mister Speaker, I rise to speak on item...
Sorry, right, chairman.
Just chairman, I'm very sorry.
Yeah, that's all right.
Mister Chairman, I rise to speak on item I. I just quickly wanted to take a moment to highlight the benefits of these amendments to Package J, to provide additional onsite parking for two or more bedroom units. The good people of Doughboy are relieved and that's to say the least. This morning I was at a cafe in Cannon Hill and the paper was out on the table and residents were commenting on how proactive this administration is and how we're actually listening. Living in Carina, I have seen firsthand the impact of the City Plan 2014 car parking ratio. Taken on their own, there is no problem with one or two residents in a three-bedroom unit converting their garage to a makeshift gym or using the car space for storage. And taken on their own, there is no problem that there are two couples living in a two-bedroom unit, each who have their own car, because it's the way that they get to and from work. But put that development with a couple of other people beside 10 others in the street and put that street beside five other streets that are zoned the same way, such as Dickinson, Adelaide, Irana and Pembroke Street in Carina, and you have a recipe for parking problems. It's not the fault of the residents that these scenarios exist, it's our problem as a council to be responsible to the way people are living in 2019 and I think this amendment does just that. If there is a time in our future where, like Sydney and Melbourne, our public transport system has matured and allows for us to plan for fewer car spaces, I'm sure we can all agree that this would be a good thing. This outcome has come directly on the feedback that we have received in the Plan Your Brisbane process. I've always thought elected representatives need to listen more, talk less and deliver for their communities and I am pleased to be part of a team who is doing just that.
Further speakers? deputy mayor.
Thank you, mister Chair, and I stand to speak on the item A, package H on townhouses. And I think what we've heard from everybody here, including councillor Cummings, that as time changed, townplans need to change as well. And councillor Coming reminded us the history of townplans, he forgot that last little bit though, that it was the 2000 City Plan where Lord Mayor Sawley bought in the 3,000 square metres for townhouses, that he got so close, Sally Anne didn't change it, it wasn't changed by Lord Mayor from 10,000 to 7,000 to 5, enter 3 and 2,000.
All right, okay councillors, councillors, allow the deputy mayor to be heard. Councillors, please, calm yourselves.
All of these city plans are a point in time in the city. City Plan 2014 is now five years ago, the reality is it is five years ago and things change. We heard from councillor Johnson that this townhouse amendment is only going to affect people in the far-flung outer suburbs of Brisbane. That is not true, along with a lot of not-truths that we heard from councillor Johnson or just straight-out incorrect facts. I'm not saying they are intentional, they are just wrong. But the fact is, Holland Park Ward is a middle-ring suburb and what we are seeing now, five years after the last City Plan, is not the emerging communities, the far-flung suburbs of 3,000 square metres sitting there for development into residential. We are seeing houses, houses that have been established for 20, 30, 40, 50 years in some cases in Malkavad East, that are being amalgamated, where people buy into their community and expect there to be 20 houses in their street. But it is now a marketable and viable option to buy five of those houses, amalgamate to get the 3,000 square metres.
No, 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 no.
Keep going with...
No, no, no.
No, that's the continual interruption, mister Chair.
Okay, all right, everybody stop.
She snipes from the side continually.
Everybody stop. Okay, there has been a lot of interjections. Please allow the speaker to be heard in silence, deputy mayor.
Thank you. I see councillor Griffiths hasn't stood to stand, he always likes to tell us that we don't stand to talk about this. Councillor Griffiths is very good at yelling from the sidelines, like we're hearing from councillor Johnson, but he hasn't stood to stand to talk yet either. What we are actually seeing...
Okay, councillor Griffiths, you've interjected a great deal today, please refrain yourself. Deputy mayor.
As we are always still debating when he makes that snide comment as well. What we are seeing in Holland Park, mister Chair, is, in the Holland Park Ward, is where people are amalgamating houses that are long-established low-density residential, five houses, and then coming in for the application which, under the City Plan 2014, was allowed of 3,000 square metres to see townhouses developed. So where people have seen six townhouses, we now have applications for 29 townhouses. And that is what people are frustrated about in the Holland Park Ward. That is why this amendment has been so vital in the middle-ring suburbs like the Walter-Taylor Ward that we heard from councillor Mackay, like in the Holland Park Ward, like what we'll see probably in Doughboy, closer into the Doughboy Ward in Cooperroo, and of course Marchin as well, where there is low density. This is not just about open space going into townhouses, this is about established housing in low-density residential changing totally. And that was never the expectations of anyone from Clem Jones to Sally Anne Atkinson to Jim Sawley about townhouses coming in in established low-density residential in middle-ring suburbs because it was now a market viability. It's viable because people still want to buy those townhouses, we understand that. But there's an expectation that you look after the residential amenity as well. So again, we can hear the sniping from the opposition, from the councillor from Tennyson and from the councillor for the Marooka Ward, that they've got it so wrong. In 2014, we debated the City Plan and I stood here and I supported the City Plan. But I'm glad to see that team Shrunna, following on from team Quirk, listen to the people of Brisbane, listen to their residents, go out to consultation and make the changes that the residents in Brisbane expect. The debate we're hearing on the other side has been all about the process, not about the actual amendment, because my suggestion is, they are going to vote for it, but they've got to take a good swipe on the way through with some of their untruths that we hear all afternoon, mister Chair. It would be nice to have a mature debate on an amendment the people of Brisbane want to see, rather than the mudslinging we continually see from the other side of the chamber.
Further speakers? councillor Cook.
Thank you, mister Chair, I rise to speak on the items before us today. Mister Chair, I wasn't here for City Plan 2014, but I have, yeah, lucky me, but I have heard the horror stories and I have seen the results. Mister Chair, most days in the Morningside Ward, my office receives complaints and concerns from residents who no longer feel their voices are heard by this LMP administration when it comes to planning in this city. We have seen so many petitions that have come through this place about inappropriate development, about overdevelopment, we have brought them forward and time and time again...
Point of order, mister Chair.
Point of order, deputy mayor.
Will councillor Cook take a question?
Councillor Cook, will you take a question?
No, no, thank you.
No, can it cancel or not? Please continue.
The damage done includes parked-out streets like councillor Cassidy mentioned in Andrews Street and Cannon Hill, that's just one of many, mister Chair, across the Morningside Ward. This administration has been drunk on developer donations for so long, they have absolutely forgotten the people that they are meant to serve. These amendments today are not the saviour of Brisbane backyards or saving Brisbane's suburbs as the Courier-Mail would have you believe, splashed over the front page today. Of course, we support more car parking, of course, we want greater heritage protection. But, mister Chair, more often than not, residents are left in this place to fend for themselves when it comes to the overdevelopment that has been perpetrated by those on the other side of the chamber against them on behalf of their developer mates. We heard councillor Johnston...
Councillor Cook, I'll let you go a little bit on this, can you just keep some proportion in those sorts of comments, please? Councillor Cook.
Just, Mr Chair, when you hear something that you don't want to hear, I'm not sure that that's an appropriate objection. You know, I can hear it's hurting your ears a little bit, but-
Do you have anything to say, are you going to continue?
I will continue.
Okay, thank you.
Mr Chair, we've heard councillor Johnston speak of residents in her area fighting off over-development through the courts. My residents have done the same, residents in Camp Hill and in Morningside have been in the Planning and Environment Court, fighting a number of applications over the last 18 months during my time and have been doing so for many years before my time. They are the ones fighting off developments, and developers, who are hell-bent on over-development, destroying the character of our local area and decimating backyards. These amendments today are lip service, they are the bare minimum, both in terms of impact and outcomes, for the residents who have suffered through City Plan 2014. These amendments are cold comfort to those who are left to suffer the negative consequences and impacts inflicted by this LMP administration. This administration try to place the blame anywhere else that they can, on the state government, on the Labor Party, sometimes they even blame the residents. But the people of this city know the truth, they know who to blame for their congested and parked-out streets, that their bins can't be collected, that emergency vehicles can't access their street. It's Team Shrinna, Mr Chair. But there is hope, the end is near and the people of this city will have their say in March 2020, when Patrick Condran and a Labor administration will finally be able to clean up their mess. These amendments today don't go far enough, there is a better way, Mr Chair, and that way looks like a more consultative, resident-focused approach that only Team Condran can deliver.
Further speakers? There being none.
Absolutely.
All right, let it get cut and close, but all right, councillor Griffiths.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, I look forward to participating in this debate. I'm surprised more LMP councillors haven't participated in this debate. I do want to-
There's been a lot, mate, there's been a lot of debate today. Councillor Griffiths.
I just noticed they haven't participated in the debate, it seemed all right that the deputy mayor could comment on me participating in the debate, but when we raise the issue about them participating in the debate, that's actually an issue. I just do want to respond to a couple of comments made by some other councillors, in particular councillor Murphy, and I noticed he talked about how consultative this LMP administration is, let's look at some facts. And in terms of Plan Your Brisbane, he talked about 100,000 people being involved in the consultation process. In fact, 90,000 people participated in a game and only 118 people actually put in submissions about the Plan Your Brisbane. So it was actually only 118 people put in submission, so we exclude the game, exclude those 90,000 people who participated in the game, we only get 118 submissions that this LMP administration say, look at how well we're listening. And then councillor Owen Taylor, she also spoke, and obviously the theme that they've been told to speak about is how seriously they consult, how seriously and how they love consulting. Councillor Owen Taylor, can I just say that with the neighbourhood plan for Maruka at the moment, even though we have 20,000 residents who want to participate in that process, only 30 are allowed to participate because of the rules of this LMP council. So only 30 people are actually being listened to. That is not consultation, that's not about good planning, that is about control, that is about leading people to where you want them to be. And it's a sham. And residents are saying it, and the people of Brisbane are saying it, they're sick of the sham that is the planning process for this city. Let's go back to the 2014 plan, because I was here, like councillor Johnson, and we stood here and we had to listen to the LMP keep reminding us, we have the majority, we have the power, people voted for us, we're right, we've got everything right. Listen to that ad nauseam. They've stopped repeating that now, leading up to an election, undoubtedly if they win the election again, oh no, no, actually councillor Murphy did say it, he did say it, yes, that belief that they are right. Absolute power gives you the right to do what you like.
Point of order.
Point of order to you councillor Murphy.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted, to be called at the end. Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you. But what I saw in that 2014 plan was that it did three things. The first thing was it clearly took away the majority of residents' rights to participate in the development process. So it was big tick for the developers, that's what developers wanted, less resident feedback, and we wanted applications to get through quicker and easier for developers. The second thing it did was it looked after developers. It actually brought the bacon home for developers. And I remember the morning, before we were even presented with the new City Plan, the developers got a briefing by this LMP administration, they actually had a developers' breakfast, it was literally a developers' breakfast, with the Lord Mayor quirk there and a number of LMP councillors there, talking about what the developers would get, so they even knew before we'd had the debate in the chamber.
Who paid for the breakfast?
I wonder who paid for the breakfast, was it a fundraiser, who knows? And the other thing was, we've sold residents out in terms of letting infrastructure keep up with development, we've not done that, we've failed that. But worse than that was the fact that residents have really been impacted by these changes. And what I'm hearing, and undoubtedly what the LMP are hearing, is the cut in car parking, which the developers wanted, means our streets are parked out and the complaints we're getting have increased dramatically. It's interesting too that we have numerous neighbourhood plans across the city, but this administration constantly ignore those neighbourhood plans and let other developments go in that are much higher and much bigger. Developers once again get what they want. We've seen increased density and we've seen removal of setbacks, and hence we have the problems with the townhouses at the moment.
Point of order, Mr Chairman, will councillor Griffiths take a question?
Point of order to you councillor Burke. Councillor Griffiths, will you take a question?
No.
Councillor Burke, no, he will not. Councillor Griffiths, please continue.
Yeah, and look, the thing that I find the most ironical was listening to councillor Krista Adams talk about how she's looking after her community, what a load of hogwash, what an absolute load of hogwash. She did not stand up for her community in terms of saving sport and rec land at Taragindi. In fact, she let that sport and rec land be developed, and not just-
Point of order, Mr Chair. Claimed to be misrepresented.
Not just with a few units or a few homes, with 90 units and a high-rise building.
And as well as that, they removed fora and flora protection on that site as well. She sold them out totally. And yet here councillor Adams is saying, I'm here and I'm listening and we don't want these bad developments, just after we're paid $6.2 million for three house blocks in Upper Mount Cravat. $6.2 million for three house blocks in Upper Mount Cravat because there was a contentious development. Horrendous, horrendous use of bushland money. I haven't been afraid of taking on this neighbourhood plan, in fact, I've been to more meetings, I think, out in the community than a lot of councillors. And I've invited, often I've invited the administration, the mayor, the deputy mayor, the planning chair to come along, and they don't attend. They're vacant, they're nowhere to be seen, they're hiding.
Point of order.
Point of order, deputy mayor.
We are clearly misleading the chamber, I've never been invited by councillor Griffiths to offer-
Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, you have. In fact, you're the one, I was going to praise and say you're the only one who's turned up to one of the meetings. It was interesting to watch your performance, because you actually argued against the residents, I've never quite seen that, but anyway, and that's probably why your numbers are going down.
Point of order, Mr Chair. Could you bring the councillor back to the topic at hand?
Yeah, that's okay.
Because we're not talking about this.
Councillor Griffiths, can you please bring your attention back to the matter at hand?
We are talking about planning and we have, a lot of people have had a lot of scope, we're talking about planning. And consultation. Anyway, look, in terms of the City Plan, it has delivered horrendous results. The 2014 City Plan has delivered horrendous results for my ward. In Nathan, there's a group, and I noticed that none of the people from that group were invited on to the Little Select Planning Group, a group set up to oppose an 800-unit development in a very small space. Those residents are angry, they're annoyed, and they can't believe that this is the way our city's going forward. Similarly, in Salisbury, I've attended meetings there where people are opposed to the density, something that the LMP brought in last time that none of them have, well, they've all failed to mention, is the fact that now in low-density areas you can take your blocks down to 300 metres squared around shopping centres. That was another density initiative that you brought in.
Councillor Griffiths, can you come back? There's lots of stuff you're talking about that's relevant to 2014 but not relevant to these papers. Now, I've had a pretty generous interpretation of what's going on, but you can't just cherry-pick stuff out of the air.
I'm not cherry-picking stuff.
You've got to actually talk about, you have to have some relevance.
This is relevant, this is about City Plan. This is relevant, this is about City Plan. If you don't want to hear about City Plan-
Well, I know, my point is-
This is about City Plan, Chair.
But you're not talking about City Plan.
I am talking about City Plan, in fact, the 300-metre site is about City Plan.
So you're going to-
It is about City Plan, you voted for it. Now, if it's uncomfortable to hear that, I'm really sorry, but you brought it in.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order.
Can councillor Griffiths, will councillor Griffiths take a question?
Councillor Griffiths, will you take a question? I'm trying to speak, I'm being interrupted constantly by the LMP councillors.
No, deputy mayor, no. Please continue, councillor Griffiths.
In fact, at Maruka and Clifton Hill, we've had more public meetings there trying to save character houses that this administration-
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, deputy mayor.
Relevance of character houses to townhouses, iconic vistas, or car parking.
I understand what's in the court, councillor Griffiths, this is not an opportunity just to list all of your townplan grievances of the recent years. Please, please, just be on topic.
Item D.
Thank you.
Very good. No, it's a very sensitive issue for the people on the other side of the chamber, they obviously don't like any debate, they don't like ideas being put out there, character housing needs to be saved in our suburbs, and it's one of the big failures of this administration, despite the fact that they say they're saving it, what we see time and again is the removal and destruction of character houses across our suburbs. Similarly, for me, Mr Chairman, is issues in Rockleigh, in Archerfield, in Oxley, in Willawong. In Willawong, where we actually, where this administration allowed, allowed a housing development to be put right next to a noxious waste dump. Incredible, and that's supposedly good planning under this administration. Mr Chairman, I believe that this administration's got planning all wrong for the city. I hear it time and again from my residents at public meetings I attend where the LMP won't attend. They are out of touch, they are not listening, and for the worst results, it means that residents are losing out, but developers are doing okay. Thank you.
Further speakers, oh, excuse me, no, there's a few of these. Councillor Murphy, your misrepresentation, please.
Chair, councillor Griffiths said something along the lines of, that I said we would definitely win the next election, although I certainly hope that's the case, I said nothing even remotely like that in my speech. I don't know what goes on inside councillor Griffiths' head, Chair.
No, yeah, no, thank you, no more. Deputy mayor, your misrepresentation.
Sorry, I'm just calming myself, Mr Chair. Councillor Griffiths complaining of personal abuse, I just had to settle for a second. My claim to misrepresent, councillor Griffiths said that I rode Roffshard over the sport and rec in Taragindi and that there is no sport and rec left on the site, there'll be a new bowls club, a new bowls rugby team and an open space park for the community.
All right, further speakers, councillor Burke.
Thanks very much, Mr Chairman, I just rise to enter the debate on item ADG and I. Mr Chairman, I'm going to start by just reading this wonderful article that the deputy mayor just provided to me, Mr Chairman. It's an article from the Sunday Mail, and it says, "Labour's Steve Griffiths has been outspoken opposing Brisbane City Council's new draft City Plan that allows for smaller lots. The council for Maruka even told its constituents that council was attempting to turn Brisbane into a sardine suburb." Mr Chairman, it goes on to say that councillor records show while Griffiths was questioning the new plan, he was busily proposing to slice his own property into two-
Point of order, Mr Chair.
...248 square metre lot and a 343 square metre lot, Mr Chair.
Point of order to you councillor Shree.
Just unrelevance, this is, you've been really strict with the opposition, councillor-
Oh no, I mean councillor Shree, I let, no, 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 I let councillor Strunk, okay, stop, everybody calm down.
I mean, I mean, like, honestly-
No, councillor Burke, no, no, I allowed, I've allowed a great deal of leniency here, including councillor Strunk talking about the convenience of a 7-Eleven, among a whole range of things. People have been, have used this as an opportunity to relitigate a whole range of planning arguments well beyond the reach of the matters in front of them, and councillor Burke will come to his point quickly, however. Councillor Burke.
Thanks very much, Mr Chair. So what I was going to say then was Labour councillors complained about slice-and-dice subdivisions in the City Plan when it was first debated in 2012, but apparently it's okay if it's their own subdivision, Mr Chairman. And this goes to the credibility of every single comment that those on the other side of the chamber made this afternoon when it comes to City Plan, Mr Chairman, because they don't understand planning, they don't have a vision and they don't have any experience when it comes to dealing with these complex issues in our city, Mr Chairman. We on this side of the chamber, though, have a track record of delivering good planning outcomes across the city, while the leader of the opposition-
Councillor Johnston, please cease interjecting. Councillor Burke, okay, no, stop, wait until councillor Johnston ceases interjecting, please.
Well, councillor Cummings, great for you to enter the discussion because you're the only person in this place who's knocked down a character home, so thank you for joining in the debate. We've got the two resident developers in this chamber on that side, of course, arguing against planning changes, Mr Chairman, whereas this administration is listening to the residents of Brisbane. Councillor Cassidy stood up and said Plan Your Brisbane was just an advertising exercise. Well, if that does not tell the residents of Brisbane what the Labor Party think of engagement with residents and listening to residents' views is, well, I'm sorry, I'm so astounded. That is the most hypocritical thing. For a team that says we should be listening more and engaging more, for councillor Cassidy to stand up and say that the most comprehensive engagement with the residents of Brisbane around planning issues was nothing more than an advertising exercise is galling, Mr Chairman, because the residents had their say. And councillor Griffiths, another furphy that was thrown out there, this only 118 submissions were made on Plan Your Brisbane, well, there was 277,000 interactions, 114,000 unique interactions, 562 responses to the survey, Mr Chairman, 1,500 different ideas that led to eight key themes and 40 action items. If that is not an engagement, Mr Chairman, I don't know what is.
Please allow the councillor to be heard in silence, councillor Burke.
If that is not an engagement exercise with people, I don't know what is, Mr Chairman.
Point of order, Chair. Point of order, councillor Murphy.
Will councillor Burke take a question?
Councillor Burke, will you take a question?
I'm like those on the other side, I'm more happy to take a question.
Yeah, please, go ahead councillor Murphy.
Well councillor Burke, do you think it is somewhat classist for the Labor Party to not accept people who played the game as having made a valid opinion on the planning exercise? Do you think that that is in fact classist?
It's apparently all right to manipulate IP addresses to get a result on a poll, but of course if you want to go through a process and engage with people and have a discussion around planning and then provide a survey and a feedback, that's not all right according to the Australian Labor Party. Whereas we on this side want to engage with everyone, Mr Chairman, so everyone from young people in our communities through our intergenerational forum, intergenerational forum that helps inform these planning changes, Mr Chairman, right through to the consultation that we did on the individual packages that we had before us, Mr Chairman. Of course, there was nothing about townhouses before this administration went out there and said we wanted to ban them from the Australian Labor Party, not one bow peep, Mr Chairman. Of course, there was no action on pre-1911s until this administration took the step to start protecting them, Mr Chairman. So the Labor Party can keep, councillor Griffiths, sorry councillor Cummings, you can scoff all you like, you knock them down, we protect them, Mr Chairman. So, we actually took steps to protect them.
Okay, all right, actually stop there councillor Burke. Councillor Griffiths, I hereby that unless you cease interjecting using a particular swear word, you may be suspended for a period of up to eight days. Furthermore councillor Griffiths, if you are suspended, you must immediately leave the meeting place and must remain away from all planning places for the period of the suspension. Councillor Burke.
Thanks very much, Mr Chairman, and while, while once again-
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
I'd really just like to be clear about which swear words get you awarding. I'd really just like to be clear about which swear words get you a warning, which swear words get you ejected for the rest of the meeting, and which swear words get you ejected for two whole meetings. So, crap a warning, so if I use crap in future, crap will be just a warning, and if I accidentally say something else, is it eight days?
Councillor Johnston, again, I mean, this is really juvenile, like, you just, no, no, stop.
Can you just clarify your rule for me? Just want to know the rule so I don't breach it.
This is, it's pretty juvenile that you get such joy out of jumping on a microphone and swearing. You know full well, no, it's, it's not, it's not me, I think that the community would look unfavorably upon the sort of language you use in this place. And I don't, it's not my standard, it's a community standard, and I think that it's not unreasonable, and I do not think that it's not, I don't, okay. Councillor, councillor Burke, please continue.
Thanks very much, Mr Chairman. As I was saying, so the changes that we have before us today, major H, major F...
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
I'm asking a valid question.
Yep.
Because we have to be able to operate under the rules of procedure, and I would like to know which swear words mean a warning, which swear words are the rest of the meeting...
You've been playing this silly game for weeks.
It's not a silly game, because you are applying the rules differently in different circumstances. So please, which swear word?
Councillor Johnston, I believe that you, as well as anyone else here, understands that people should not swear in this place. I don't think that it's unreasonable to expect, to expect that, and I don't know why you so passionately want to defend your right to swear, or why councillor Griffiths defends his right to swear.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
No, I'm speaking, I'm speaking, and that the fact that you, you feel that you have some sort of right to this is all really quite strange. But because everybody's so worked up, and because people are unable to control themselves, could I please have a 15-minute adjournment?
Mr Chair, I move that we adjourn for 15 minutes until the chamber settles down. Seconded.
Thank you. I have a resolution for a 15-minute adjournment to allow councillors to calm themselves, moved by councillor Adams and councillor Richards. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
And the contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Divided by councillor Johnston and councillor Cook. Ayes to my right, ayes to my left.
In a chamber of a country, close to a town...
No, the problem is the inconsistent co-chairing of the meeting.
I agree.
Crap's a warning, in other words, not, how do we know? That's the problem.
That is not a...
I think everything will be made.
And you can keep verbally being all you want, but I can tell you now, your chair is the problem.
Please close the bars. The clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 20 in favour and 7 against.
The ayes have it, the meeting is adjourned for 15 minutes. Thank you.
Welcome back. What have you got? How much time left, Clark? Six and a half minutes, councillor Burke.
Fabulous. Thanks very much, Mr Chairman. So, as I was saying, the only people in this place to take advantage of a performance-based planning scheme, Mr Chairman, has been the two councils that are named on the other side of the chamber. We on this side of the chamber, though, are going through the process of amending the city plan. It's interesting to know that those on the other side think that some magical thing about us amending city plan, like it's never happened before. Of course, the history of planning in this city is punctuated by new town plans or new city plans. 2014, 2000, '87 was the town plan during the Atkinson administration, '78 was a town plan, '71, so as you can see, the years between town plans are getting smaller and smaller, of course, '65, so '65, '71, '78, '89, 2000, 2014, Mr Chairman. What we do do, though, is we update and amend city plan to reflect the changing culture and the changing lifestyle of the residents of Brisbane, and that is what we are doing today, Mr Chairman. Major Amendment H responds to the concerns of residents in this city. It is built upon our engagement with them, it is built upon their feedback, both through the formal process of the amendment, through Brisbane's Future Blueprint, through Plan Your Brisbane, Mr Chairman, and it delivers on what they wanted to see in their local communities across this city. Sixty-three per cent of the residential areas in this city are zoned low-density residential. So the second furphy I want to dispel today is that this only applies to some random 3,000 square metre lots out there in the magical outer suburb land. No. This applies to every single low-density lot in this city where you can amalgamate it with three or four or five or six others to get to that 3,000 square metres. And those are the applications that we have been seeing in recent years, and that is what we want to put a stop to, Mr Chairman, and that's why this amendment is important today. The next furphy that we just have to destroy once and for all, because the Labor Party keep repeating it, Mr Chairman, is this idea that this administration somehow got rid of code-notifiable assessment in this city. No, we did not. We weren't the ones who took away residents' rights to know about code DAs, Mr Chairman. It was the state Labor government at the time who changed the planning laws. It was not this administration. We can't have things in our planning scheme that go outside the state planning scheme policies, Mr Chairman. So every time that they stay up, and this goes to the credibility of every comment they ever make about town planning, because we know they have no vision, we know they have no experience, Mr Chairman, we know they have no ideas when it comes to town planning, because while councillor Cook may have put together a configuration of, you know, non-emotive superlatives, Mr Chairman, about their great planning policy, what we've heard from the opposition is that they are going to a prescriptive planning scheme to ban townhouses across the whole of the city, Mr Chairman, while somehow magically going to deal with housing affordability. Well, that's not going to happen, Mr Chairman, because those opposite don't have the experience or the understanding, as councillor Strunk said, of how town planning actually works. We on this side of the chamber continue to implement all of the recommendations of the blueprint, including, Mr Chairman, the work that we've done through the industrial strategy. And it's really interesting, because what I heard from councillor Shree in one argument was that he doesn't support protecting or enhancing or providing opportunities for people to redevelop or to change the form of some of the industrial land across the city to respond to a changing workforce, to respond to a changing manufacturing market, to respond to changing business conditions, but what he wants is decentralised employment. And one of the best ways we as a city can support jobs in our suburbs so that people don't have to drive large trucks across the city or to catch public transport across the city is to make use and revitalise the existing industrial areas repurposed as employment knows, Mr Chairman, and the industrial strategy does that. And Major K starts to take steps to amend those elements of the planning scheme to respond to the changes in the way that businesses are run, particularly in industrial areas. We no longer have uses that suit the traditional large-scale building where you used to make steel or you used to make a range of different things, Mr Chairman, that don't suit the type of manufacturing or technology or research businesses that are coming in, high net worth businesses, Mr Chairman, that employ people, that actually generate jobs in our city, and that is what we want to support, Mr Chairman, and that is why Major K is important. One thing that was not mentioned by the opposition at all is the fact that there is 1,000 hectares, 1,000 hectares of land, Mr Chairman, that is being rezoned to protect it as conservation zoning, Mr Chairman, that has been purchased by the Bushland Preservation Levy. That is another important thing. On top of that, Mr Chairman, this administration is getting on with the next commitment that we made to the residents of Brisbane about rezoning emerging communities' land across the city. And another one, that resident developer that we have in the council chamber chiming in again, thank you councillor Cumming, great to have you here, which character house are you knocking down this week? As I said, Mr Chairman, we are dealing with the emerging communities' land and rezoning that, 40 hectares of it across the city, 54 properties being rezoned as part of Major K. And to allay the concerns from councillor Shree and councillor Johnston, Major K is at the first step. It is going out for public consultation, Mr Chairman, just like the industrial strategy went out for public consultation, and neither of you made a submission on that.
Neither of you did.
Well, sorry, councillor Johnston, you may have, the Labor Party didn't, and the Greens...
Councillor Johnston, you proved your point. You've said the same thing three times in a row.
And as I said, you may have, councillor Johnston, but councillor Shree didn't, and the Labor Party didn't make a submission on it. The opportunity will be there for you to have your say on Major K as part of the public consultation. I commend Major F to the chamber. I hope the state government and Bailey deals with Major H, and I want to thank the council offices for all their hard work.
Councillor Burke, your time has expired. Any further speakers? Lord Mayor, I'll now put items A, D and I. All those in favour say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Division?
Division called by councillor Burke and councillor Hammond. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bells.
Sorry, it's up to you.
Attendents, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 26 in favour and one abstention.
The ayes have it. Please return to your chairs. I will now put item G. All those in favour of G say aye. To the contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Division?
Division called by councillor Johnston.
Second.
And councillor Shree. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bells. It is item G. Attendents, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 25 in favour and two against.
The ayes have it. Please return to your seats. All right. Lord Mayor, can I please ask you to present items B, C, E, F and H for the room? B, C, E, F and H. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Item B relates to the Stores Board submission on the Wally Tate Park. The Wally Tate Park project is the enhancement of district sports components, which will include additional sports fields with a synthetic wicket, upgraded senior cricket field, including field irrigation, new shelters and barbecues, new leased amenity building with change rooms, additional car parking and a widened access road and shared bike and pedestrian path. I want to give a shout out in particular to councillor Kim Marks, who has been a strong advocate for our local community for this green space and in the ongoing delivery of Wally Tate Park. This will be a fantastic addition to the Runcorn Ward and the local community, and thanks goes to councillor Marks for her contribution to making it all happen. With the design underway, the tender is due in early 2020, with the contract expected to be awarded in May 2020, following the endorsement of this Stores Board submission. Item C relates to the significant contracting plan for maintenance services for bus air conditioning systems. In 2011, council's bus fleet became 100% air conditioned, and we all remember as children and younger people riding around in council buses that weren't air conditioned. And I remember distinctly the rattle of the windows, because you had to have the windows open to get some breeze in, and the windows would just rattle constantly. And so definitely the standard and comfort of our bus fleet has come a long way, and that's because of the investment that we have made over many years in delivering a fully accessible, fully air-conditioned bus fleet. And that goes not only for the passengers but for the bus operators and the drivers as well, who, because, you know, in the past, the drivers did not have any air conditioning either, and so they were working in this environment all the time. It might have been passengers, you know, taking a half an hour bus trip, but the drivers were in that type of environment all day for their entire shift. So we've come a long way, and the air conditioning of the fleet has helped to make sure we have a modern and comfortable bus fleet, together with an accessible bus fleet as well. The current contract for this service expires on the 31st of August next year, and there are no further options to extend. The current contract was awarded on a preferred supplier arrangement, but this time we'll be going to the market to ensure that the competitiveness is there and council gets the best deal. The new contract will allow for future growth, including servicing of the new Brisbane Metro fleet as well, which, when they begin service. We're also considering options for single or multiple suppliers based on location, on expertise in servicing particular air conditioning systems. The tender will be released on the 29th of November this year and will close in February to give suppliers enough time to respond. The content, the weighting for local content will be 20% to give a preference for local suppliers, which is consistent with our procurement objectives, and we'll be providing this service across seven different depots in Transport for Brisbane. We have, next, item E is the Kangaroo Point Peninsula and Neighbourhood Plan. This, as was referred to in council earlier, relates to the high-density and mixed-use residential development areas within the plan and provides clarity around building heights, controls to reserve views to and from the Story Bridge. The plan, however, does not result in an increase in the amount of land included in the high-density residential zoning, and existing high-density residential zone areas located under the Story Bridge will be converted or rezoned to community facilities and special purpose. We identified through the planning process that there were sections under the Story Bridge zoned, we believed, inappropriately, and we're fixing that up through this plan. Areas zoned for open space will see continued protection, and additional properties will be included under the heritage overlay. Public consultation was carried out from the 5th of October to the 10th of November last year. On the 11th of June 2019, council resolved to modify the proposed amendment in response to submissions, and the neighbourhood plan received approval for adoption from the minister. The neighbourhood plan is presented here to the chamber for final adoption. Item F relates to Brisbane Metro property resumptions, and we had something similar come through, I think it was last week, wasn't it, councillor Adams? Just last week, we obviously were pleased to stand shoulder to shoulder with the state government and Minister Bailey to move, well, kind of, kind of shoulder to shoulder. Hand in hand with Minister Bailey. And I have to say, credit where credit is due, it has been very positive.
Okay, get all right. Councillors, all calm down. It's, I know it's all very exciting, the Metro's an exciting project. Lord Mayor?
They don't like it. They don't like it if I say something critical, and they don't like it if I say something positive. Like, what is it? What is it with these people? So the reality is, we have seen a distinct change in attitude from the state government... So the reality is, we have seen a distinct change in attitude from the state government, and it is a positive thing, and I want to give credit and pay credit for that, which is great. Metro is underway and we will see early works commence within weeks. So we're expecting those to gear up in January and continue on throughout 2020. And this land that we're seeing come through today is being acquired for the Metro Depot. And of the four properties before us today, two did not submit objections and two did. Negotiations concerning compensation will continue to occur concurrently with the formal resumption process, as outlined in the Acquisition of Land Act. In June, council finalized the shortlist of respondents that will progress to the request for tender for the design and construction of the Metro Depot. And a contract is expected to be awarded for the depot next year. So another positive initiative related to Metro and more progress that's happening on the project. And it's interesting, Labour knows so little about this project that we heard their candidate out there on Friday trying to bag the announcement that was being done jointly between council and the state government and the Labour state government, and claiming that we had spent $80 million on brochures to promote Metro. $80 million. $80 million on brochures. I mean, you cannot believe a word that comes out of this guy's mouth. $80 million on brochures. This is, this is someone who said, I think we had a $30 billion annual budget as well. So like, literally, no idea at all, no experience to run Australia's largest council, and we see just making stuff up, just putting stuff out there. So $80 million is the total investment overall in the Brisbane Metro project. That includes land resumption, that includes all of the work that went into the business case and planning, all of the design work and engineering that's happened to date. $80 million is the entire investment on Brisbane Metro so far, yet we have someone who wants to lead this city claiming that $80 million has been spent on brochures promoting Metro. I mean, yep, these guys, serious credibility issues here. Moving on to item H, which is Transurban Queensland Legacy Project at the Greenways Esplanade Park. Transurban have been delivering, or have successfully delivered the Logan Enhancement Project, which was a $500 million upgrade of parts of Logan and Gateway Motorways. And the roadworks were obviously completed a few months back in August. It's been a great project. And as part of that project, Transurban committed to providing some improvements to support local communities. And they've done that both for Brisbane City Council and for Logan City Council, because the project obviously benefits both areas.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension.
Extension of time is removed by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Richards. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Thank you. And so when the state government accepted the proposal from Transurban, and it was a market-led proposal, part of that proposal was to do improvement works both for Brisbane and for Logan councils. Council officers have been working with Transurban to create and design a cycle park at the Greenways Esplanade Park in Parkinson to provide an opportunity for children and adults to be further educated on road safety. And these, I know these parks where they exist in other parts are extremely popular and well-used and appreciated by the community. And I know councillor Angela Owen has been a great supporter and advocate for the Cycle Park project. And negotiations have been continuing between council and Transurban regarding the appropriate site location and the development of the park plan. So Transurban will pay for and undertake the design and construction of the Cycle Park, and council will be responsible for the park after that point. So effectively, they'll design and build it, hand it over to us, and it'll become our asset, which we will accept. The intended handover date for the completed project is the 30th of April 2020. So obviously, that's a good contributed asset that's coming on board as part of a state government project. So thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on all these items, B, C, E, F, H. And just ask that E be taken seriously, item for voting purposes, please?
E for voting?
Yes.
Yep.
Just briefly, through these projects, these items here, the Stores Board submission, and we'll be supporting all of these items apart from the Kangaroo Point Neighbourhood Plan. But item B, the Stores Board submission, significant contracting plan for the construction of Wally Tate Park upgrade. The remarkable thing about this is the level of blocked out items in here that we are not allowed to talk about, the commercial and confidence figures. So we see on page six, where it talks about the programme budget funding availability in terms of capital under Programme Three, $17 million this year, $15 million next year, $16 million the year after, $16 million the year after that. But we're not allowed, we're not allowed to talk about most of the items in the cost breakdown for this project. We've had contracts through this place just in recent times that run into the tens and tens of millions of dollars, of which we, or the people of Brisbane are allowed to hear about. But when it comes to this park, we can't talk about most of that. And when you look at the item there, the corporate overhead, which is of course, commercial and confidence, and that's council's own corporate overheads. And we know from previous experience what this administration likes to spend those corporate overheads on, and whether this is on things like bushland acquisition, or in this case, a park upgrade, things like corporate finance, support services, employee payroll services, financial services, admin services, information services, branch, corporate comms, HR, procurement, revenue management, other things in terms of fleet management as well, ethical standards, insurance services, car pools, fleet optimization. I mean, these are all things that this administration likes to spend project money on, rather than allocating money actually to these things. They go into these projects and call it corporate overheads, and then slap commercial and confidence over the top of it. Now, this seven-figure sum of corporate overheads is quite extraordinary, and we think the people of Brisbane should be able to see exactly, exactly what it is. We've had the Lord Mayor claim earlier that this was some sort of open and transparent administration here in council. You only have to turn, you only have to turn to page seven of the E and C just to see how open and transparent this administration really is. Not, is the answer, actually not. We will be supporting the Stores Board submission contracting plan for maintenance services for bus air conditioning systems, although still awaiting some advice from the deputy mayor. She said she would provide that. Have been disturbed to hear of reports that the air conditioning, or the temperature gauge for buses has been moved from the front of the bus where the driver is located to the back of the bus. So drivers, what the operating conditions the drivers are operating under is not fully understood at the moment. So I'd certainly await that advice and certainly hope that under this maintenance plan for air conditioning our buses, we won't see situations where bus drivers are forced to turn their buses and their air conditioners off when they're on short layovers, causing distress.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
This has nothing to do with this item, and we'll be talking to that in the committee report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, can you return to the items in the report, please?
Oh, thanks, Deputy Chair. Item F, the Brisbane Metro Project Property Resumptions. We see these come through here. We have, of course, and the people of Brisbane, no one in here will have any idea what the final costs of the Brisbane Metro will be. A couple of months ago, the Lord Mayor revealed that it was going to have a blowout of somewhere between $90 and $400 million due to its poor planning, due to his poor planning, when it comes to the delivery of this project. Time and again, we see the extraordinary cost overruns on all aspects, particularly around property resumptions. There's a couple here who have agreed, a couple who haven't. We saw that last week where the money that council agreed to pay one of those owners was significantly above what it was valued at, because this administration couldn't really organise a chook raffle, let alone a banana bus project. And item H, we'll be supporting this item, the Legacy Project at Greenways Esplanade Park. Just circling back to item E, the Kangaroo Point Peninsula Neighbourhood Plan. This came to council as a draft plan before it was sent up to the state government. We initially supported the plan going out for consultation a couple of years ago, at that first stage. We didn't support what came back through council as the draft plan itself, where, as is the case with just about every neighbourhood plan we've seen come through this place in recent times, the feedback that the community has given to council is largely ignored. I've seen that in the process of, I think councillor Griffiths is going through the early stages of that now. I've just experienced that in my community with the draft strategy for the Sandgate District Neighbourhood Plan. That's only the draft strategy stage where people are already feeling like they're being ignored. And we've seen that in the Kangaroo Point Peninsula Neighbourhood Plan. Our remarks on the record with that, I don't see any great changes in this final plan from what came through this place earlier this year. So we won't be supporting this.
Further speakers? Councillor Marks.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on the item, I've forgotten what item number it was, sorry. B, sorry. Item B, the Wally Tate Improvement Park. The Wally Tate Park was identified some years ago in the LGP as requiring some improvement and work to be done on it to deal with the rising need for local communities to be involved in sports. And a sporting analysis was actually undertaken and completed back in January 2018 by the Connected Communities Branch, and recommendations from that analysis were used as a basis for the concept plan. So the initial concept plan was sent out to residents in the Caribbe Runcorn area on the 27th of August 2018. It's always interesting when you look at what is just basically a concept plan on a piece of paper that the officers have felt that is what was required in the area. And you think you know potentially which way the residents are going to think or what they're going to come back with and what their thought processes are. And I have to say, I was completely surprised and taken off guard when the only feedback we got from this community consultation was all to do with the dola, which is presently on that particular site. So it was really interesting. So, because one of the original plans was that the dola was going to be cut quite severely in size where the car park would go. That caused a lot of angst with the community, because they, it was a much-loved dola and they spent a lot of time down there and they didn't want to lose any size to it. So that was okay. So we went back to the officers and said, this is the major feedback that we're receiving. So they then went back to the drawing board and moved the car park into a different situation and a different place, so the dola flesh area size remains the same. There are a number of people that use this particular area, it's a very large park. At the beginning, or the entrance of the park is the Caribbe Mosque, which as everyone will know, is a very much-loved mosque, and particularly on a Friday afternoon, is an extremely busy area. I have the Korean Society of Queensland having a building there. The Elserage Iraqi Association are also one of the Leesies. And then we have the Queensland Lul Corsing and Caribbe Cricket Club are also Leesies there of that site. So the Caribbe Cricket Club will be delighted that they're getting a refurbished senior field and two junior fields, which will mean they will now have access to a senior field and four junior fields, which is much needed in my area. Some stuff has already happened in that space. We put in an outdoor gym, which was one of the Lord Mayor's deliverables, and that's been delivered, as well as a muja, and there is an existing skate park there as well. It's taken a fair bit of planning and working to get to this point in time. They, there is a block of land there at the entrance to the car park that was actually owned by council but was used by the Queensland Rail for a number of years. And they would continue to use that as an overflow car park. So when this project started to take shape, we said, well, we needed to have that car park back. So that took a little bit of negotiating. There's actually a big, sort of fairly large block of land that splits this Wally Tate Park in half, and it's almost a hill. Ideally, it would be nice to get rid of that and make that a much wider open space. But unfortunately, that's a block of land that's actually owned by the state government and it's actually contaminated. So it's all spill from when the Queensland Rail upgraded their site. So they did ask if we could do a deal that they would give us that block of contaminated land if I gave them the block of car parking land. And I said, no deal, because I just know how much it is to fix contaminated land up. And so unfortunately, that piece will remain in the middle of the park. But anyway, that's okay, we work around it. But the residents with the outdoor gym so far, it's been really, really much appreciated and it's always extremely busy down there. And there's a whole lot of other stuff. So I'm really looking forward to where the contractors get whoever they may be, and they can start actually delivering this project to be well-loved by my community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Marks. Further speakers? Councillor Shree.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on the Kangaroo Point Peninsula Neighbourhood Plan. I'm strongly opposed to this plan in its current form, and I'm disappointed that the administration has ignored the wishes of the local residents who've raised concerns about this project. The mayor, it's a shame he's not in the chamber at the moment, because I don't think he actually understands the implications of this plan. But for the interests of anyone who's watching at home or any of the journalists who are listening and covering this later, it is not correct for the mayor to suggest that there's been no increase in height associated with this plan. The mayor is correct in saying that there haven't been major changes to the sites which are zoned high density under city plan. But what's important to understand is that the height limits for this area are dictated by the existing Kangaroo Point Peninsula Neighbourhood Plan. And there are many sites within the current neighbourhood plan that have an acceptable height outcome of 10 storeys. So if you, if you jump to the existing plan, you can see it for yourself. The relevant table for maximum building height is table 7.2, 0.11, 0.1, 0.3, 0. B. That's in the existing Kangaroo Point Peninsula Neighbourhood Plan. And for example, it says that, it refers to development of a site on the eastern side of Bradfield Highway, where south of Cairn Street, building height is 10 storeys. Development of a site on the western side of Bradfield Highway, where south of Bright Street, maximum height of 10 storeys. There's even a line in the table that says, development of a site in all other areas, maximum height of 10 storeys. So there are quite large chunks of this neighbourhood plan where, up until today, the maximum height limit under the neighbourhood plan has been 10 storeys. But what this plan does is upzones significant chunks of the peninsula up to 15 storeys and in some cases, 12 storeys. And I think the administration has been a little bit misleading in its communications to the public, because they've used the line about there haven't been any major changes to the city plan zoning. But there is a significant change in the acceptable height comes from the last neighbourhood plan to this one. So essentially, what that means is that there's a significant increase in density and allowable height under the neighbourhood plan. But A, residents aren't really aware of that. And B, their local infrastructure and services aren't ready, aren't able to cope with that increased population. Now, I don't think anyone in this place would seriously argue that Kangaroo Point is a bad area for high density. I'm the first to acknowledge that it's an inner-city area and necessarily, we would expect that there'd be some high-density development around the northern half of Kangaroo Point. The problem is that the scale of these projects, the amount of density that's proposed under this new plan, far exceeds the capacity of local infrastructure and services to cater for that population and maintain a high quality of life for current and future residents. I'm particularly concerned about the failure to provide any increase in public green space around the northern half of the Kangaroo Point Peninsula. If you said to residents, we're increasing building, maximum building heights from 10 storeys to 15 storeys. storeys to 15 storeys, and we're also taking away the GFA limits, the gross floor area limits, which will allow higher density, and we're also reducing setbacks which will allow developers to build closer to property boundaries, and we're also changing site cover limits so that buildings will be able to cover more of the site, but we're not going to provide any additional public green space, do you think residents would agree to that? I don't think they do. And I think the residents who know what's proposed in this plan don't agree to that. But this council has been so misleading in its public communications and has deliberately ignored the concerns of residents who did understand what was going on. So my main concerns about this plan are that it fails to provide enough public green space, it fails to provide the necessary community facilities, it doesn't have any improvements to transport infrastructure or pedestrian connectivity, and it doesn't have any meaningful improvements to public housing or affordability for lower-income residents. I think what's been disappointing about the planning process is that council has, is trying to describe this plan and the associated urban renewal strategy as though it's going to lead to improvements in the area. But there's no funding for infrastructure attached to this neighbourhood plan. There might be some tangential references to the fact that we intend to do this or we intend to do that as part of other projects. But the plan itself doesn't come with any funding, the plan itself does not deliver infrastructure projects. The only legal effect of the plan is to upzone various sites around the peninsula to allow private developers to cram more people into those neighbourhoods. And I think it's important for councillors to understand that the types of apartments which developers are now delivering in the inner city are very different in quality and size from those that might have been delivered a few decades ago in Kangaroo Point. The older apartments that were built on the peninsula tend to be more spacious, they have more common shared areas, they have greater setbacks, and there's more public open space around the towers. The new styles of apartments that developers now are delivering around Kangaroo Point are really compact. Often people just have the one-bedroom and a really small shared kitchen lounge. There aren't those spaces for entertaining, there aren't as many shared spaces. As a result, we're seeing more complaints from residents about noisy apartment parties and disruption where residents who are living in really close proximity to one another don't have the necessary space for leisure and recreation. We're seeing there's only one or two community facilities in the whole peninsula, and we're seeing that those small few community facilities are consistently booked out, and there's a lot of competition for community facilities. We're seeing complaints from residents that there's nowhere to hold a birthday party or there's nowhere to hold a function for their friends because they don't have room in their own apartments and there aren't any community facilities in the area. We're also hearing complaints that there's no dog-off-leash area anywhere in this planned area. So we're talking about thousands and thousands of residents, we're talking about thousands of people living in 10, 15, sometimes 20-story towers, and some of them do own pets. But that council hasn't provided a single dog-off-leash area anywhere in that peninsula. And when we talk to the park planners and we say, can you identify and recommend appropriate locations for a dog-off-leash area, they say that there aren't any. And I think they might be right because we only have narrow strips of public green space around the river and Captain Burke Park within this planned area. So we've got thousands and thousands of residents living in small, high-density apartments without enough public green space, without enough community facilities. On top of that, this plan is not doing anything to complete the River Walk around the eastern side of Kangaroo Point Peninsula. And in fact, this administration has amended the local government infrastructure plan and pushed this project back into the long-term plan so that there's not even a mechanism to require private developers to complete their sections of the River Walk. At the very least, at the very least, the council should have, should be requiring private developers to complete their sections of the River Walk as new developments are approved and constructed. But this council's not even doing that. So we're going backwards in terms of the failure to provide adequate infrastructure, we're failing to connect pedestrians and cyclists, we're dramatically increasing the number of residents within the planned area, along with the number of cars and the associated traffic congestion, we're not making any meaningful improvements to provide more public housing or community housing for people on low incomes, and there's no more public green space or community facilities. So there's a real problem here where the council is creating a situation where in a few years, once these sites that are currently maybe only three or four stories, when those buildings are demolished and replaced with 15-story towers, there's simply not going to be enough public space or community facilities to go around. And the administration can harp on all day about how they're investing more in existing parks and getting better value out of existing green spaces. But there are only so many pieces of gym equipment and so many picnic shelters you can install in a park. At some point, it's not about how much junk you place into a park, it's about how much open public green space there is in a neighbourhood. And there's simply not enough public green space in this peninsula for the thousands of residents who are going to live there. The council's own desired standards of service in the city plan clearly identify target areas of green space that should be provided within close proximity to where residents live. And this plan does not meet the city plan's own desired standards of service. It falls short. You can count the number of square metres of public green space in that planned area and you can compare it to the number of residents that will live here if these sites are rezoned for up to 15 storeys. And it is very clear that as those sites develop and more residents move into the area, council will no longer be meeting its desired standards of service for the provision of public green space or the provision of community facilities. So it's extremely disappointing that this council administration has ignored residents, has failed to plan ahead and has failed to design a neighbourhood that's going to be liveable for the long term.
Further speakers, councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and I rise to speak on item F and C this evening. I'll start with F. As the Lord Mayor said, the Brisbane Metro is underway, and with the announcement last week done alongside Minister Bailey, we are, I just don't understand what's so funny. It was on all the channels, on every station on Friday night with Minister Bailey and the Lord Mayor. Now that the state are behind the Brisbane Metro, we have a way forward. I am with the Lord Mayor in saying thank you, Minister Bailey, for stepping up and realising that this is the project that we need to get going to get Brisbane moving and planning for the future. We know that 69% of commuters in Brisbane use our buses, not our rail. And with their commitment to facilitate our early work approvals, that is a fantastic news for the people of Brisbane. In addition to those works progressing, we are making good progress in other parts of the project. And that's what we have got here before us today, an approval from the Minister for Natural Resources, Mines and Energy to resume four additional properties in Rochdale for the Metro Depot. And again, this is what I was talking about earlier today with the green bridges. It's about planning for the future, making sure that we have got the plans ahead of time and the space ahead of time for the expansion of Metro. So this land will be acquired for the future expansion of Brisbane Metro services, and that again is a fantastic outcome for the people of Brisbane. The four properties before us today, as was mentioned earlier, two did not submit objections and two did. And we will continue negotiations concerning compensation concurrently with the formal resumption process as outlined in the Acquisition of Land Act 1967. So we have looked at the actual shortlist of respondents with the progress to the request of a tender for the design and construct of the depot. That contract is looking like mid of next year, and that means that through this process we'll have plenty of land to cater for the final design and construct of that depot as well. With item C, the council's bus, excuse me, significant contracting plan for the maintenance services for bus air conditioning systems. Our buses became fully 100% air-conditioned in 2011. I think we heard the school's a delight from every teenage child that had to hop on a bus. It's also uncomfortable for young and old as well, but having been an ex-teacher, they're particularly unpleasant to be around the boys at the end of the school day. So it's nice that the air-conditioned bus, it makes it a little bit more comfortable for our school students and everyone alike. And what we have here today is a scheduled maintenance continuing service for the bus air conditioning systems for moving on after the end of our contract in August 2020. The contract was awarded on a preferred supplier arrangement, but this originally, but this time we'll go to market to ensure that competitiveness gets council the best deal as well. Again, as the Lord Mayor mentioned, the new contract will allow for future growth, including the servicing of our metro fleet when they begin in 2023. So the tender will be released on the 29th of November, close in February, to give suppliers plenty of time to respond over the Christmas period. And again, as we've said before, it is about local buy, and the local content weighting is 20% for suppliers preferential in this contract who provide services out of Brisbane. So it's about supporting our local buy, making sure as we go forward with contracts into the future that we're employing our local Brisbane residents and making sure that they can live, work and play in our great city.
Further speakers. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on item B, item E, item F. I think that's it. I'd like to start with item F. I've got whiplash from listening to the L M P who have been for I don't know how long now berating the state government on how terrible the state government is. Oh, they won't meet with me. Oh, that Minister Bailey, he's a terrible man. I mean, it's been going on for months and months and months. And then suddenly, it's like, whoop, oh, oh my God, oh. We're saying thank you and oh no, there's no problem, we've been working with them. And honestly, I have whiplash. And I just, this administration is like, it's like the sky is falling, you know? It's been months and months of this and just complaint after complaint, and now suddenly, no, nothing to see here, it's all good, we love the state government. I mean, it's like a toddler throwing a tantrum and then mum giving in and saying, or dad giving in and saying, here, here, have a lolly. I mean, that's how councillor Adams, as the deputy mayor of this city and the Lord Mayor, seemed to operate. Because honestly, I've just never seen anything like it. And now suddenly, we're playing nice with the state government. Anyway, till next time, yeah. Look, honestly, we'll be back in here again in a few weeks, the big, mean state government are being terrible to us again. Anyway, meanwhile, all the problems that are identified with the Metro are still problems from my point of view. And there is a reckoning coming when the residents of Brisbane work out that you're going to cut 100 odd bus services and you're going to truncate others and not let their buses go into the city. When they find out that there will no longer be direct bus services to the University of Queensland from the south side of the river, these things are all terrible parts of planning for the Brisbane Metro. And these things will all be made very, very clear when the further details, it's all in your plan, councillor Adams.
Point of order, Mrs Chair.
Deputy Mayor.
Relevance to the purchase of land for Metro Depot.
Yeah, no, I agree. Yeah, councillor Johnston, I appreciate you've spent a little while on the general points you'd like to make on Metro, but could you just draw his attention back to the specific ones, please?
Well, the way I understand how the Metro is going to work, and perhaps the deputy mayor can stand up and say I'm wrong, but essentially, they're planning to.
Councillor Johnston, no, I just, maybe you misunderstood. I actually said, please stop making general comments and make specific ones.
Yes, I'm.
And then you expanded and became more general. Could you please just draw your attention back to the project?
This is my understanding of this item, Mr Chairman, is that this administration wants to build a Metro. To service the Metro, they want to build a Metro Depot. The buses that they're going to have, not trains, not light rail, the buses they're going to have are going to go from the depot out to service the runs, and they're going to provide public transport services to people. Now, that's my understanding of the purpose of the Metro Depot. If my understanding of the purpose of the Metro Depot is wrong, and generally how, you know, bus depots or train depots work, then perhaps the deputy mayor can stand up and tell me I'm wrong. But my concern is that the Metro buses going from this depot will not properly serve our community. And the fact that they're going to cut the buses that currently run and replace them with a substandard bus that runs from their depot is not adequate.
You've got a point of order. You do many points of order, please allow other people to do one.
Item F, the resumption of land, item F is the resumption of land for the Metro Depot. No, nothing about the bus lines, the truncations that have not been done in any way, not mentioned in this report.
Yeah, please, you know, please councillor Johnston, I've asked you, I've asked you a few times now, can I draw your attention back to the resolution at hand? You've got six minutes 50 seconds.
Excellent. Now they don't want to talk about their own Metro. I mean, you can't win, can you? I mean, it's, I mean, I don't know what's going to happen. Does anybody else think that, you know, the depot, the buses are just going to live in the depot and they'll drive around in circles in the depot and they're not actually going to go? Yeah, we don't know, we don't know, do we? However, the other really interesting thing, you know, the really interesting thing in here that I read in paragraph 98, just in case councillor Adams doesn't think this is relevant either, so we still don't have, to my knowledge, a fully approved Metro project. The, I gather it's early works approval that the state government gave last week. But what's really interesting is this administration's approach to this project. The consultation determined that the land acquired for the depot was sufficient to commence and operate the depot for the initial scheme, which I don't know, is 20 or 30 years. But additional land should be obtained for future expansion of the Brisbane Metro surface. So they haven't actually got an approved Metro yet, but they want to buy more land that they say they don't need for the future expansion of a project that doesn't have final approval. Now, that's how this administration rolls. Meanwhile, you've got people whose land they're going to take and who are very upset about it presumably. I cannot tell you how botched this project is, and I have extreme concerns with how it will impact on the residents of Brisbane. Now, with respect to Wally Tate Park, I see another wonderful solution for an L M P ward. And I'm more than $14 million budgeted to build this sporting field, which we've heard from councillor Marks includes a whole range of, you know, a whole range of things. I know, I know. I mean, I would think that councillor Richards would be very upset. She only got $10 million for Moghl. I gather it's locked at night and the residents can't even walk their dog over on the sporting field at Moghl, and there's a little bit of concern about that. But meanwhile, $14 million out at Runcorn. Now, I have no problem with the improvement of council sporting facilities in Runcorn, but what I have a problem is, is the inequitable way in which this council allocates funds. For my poor Souths Cricket, they had to apply for a grant, they got $100,000. It's costing them half a million dollars to formalise their junior sporting field, and this council has got it all back in the D A fees they've charged them. Meanwhile, oh yeah, it's appalling, it is absolutely appalling.
Councillor Johnston, I appreciate, look, we all share, you know, concerns for our own clubs and things, but can I just draw your attention back to Wally Tate Park, please?
And my point here is, which I think I'm making quite well, really, is this $14 million for an L M P ward. We're getting a Rolls-Royce solution, and it's great. I mean, meanwhile, meanwhile, other little sporting clubs are scratching around in the dirt to try and make ends meet. And there is no fair or consistent way in which this administration is investing in sporting facilities in this city. And as I said at the beginning of my speech about this, I don't begrudge anybody getting upgraded sporting facilities, but where there is a problem is where some wards are getting a gold standard and other wards are being deliberately neglected. And I can tell you, when there's 600 kids trying to play under one oval with lights every Friday night, it's not good enough. They're trying now to think about whether they'll play through winter because there are so many kids wanting to play sport. It's just not good enough that some wards get $14 million and other wards get none. And I note that based on the budget allocation, next year, there's $15,800,000 allocated for sporting facilities and delivering parks, sport parks for Brisbane. And of that, $12 million is going into Runcorn. That leaves $3 million for the rest of the city. It's just, it's just not reasonable. And it's not, I can't even remember, I think the first year I was elected, Chelma got one of those remediations, and then maybe two years after that, Graceville got a remediation on a field, but that's it. I don't believe, other than grants, council's invested in any of the sporting clubs in my ward. They desperately need help. Where's the money for the water that council promised? We've heard nothing about that, they've all been asking. So I just, I just think it's unreasonable that we see a gold-plated solution in one ward and nothing in others. And I urge this administration to be fairer in the way that they allocate funding to all sporting clubs around Brisbane, because all kids play sport, all kids play. all sporting clubs around Brisbane because all kids play sport, all kids play sport. And just briefly on the Kangaroo Point Peninsula Plan, I'll accept the word of the local councillor here, having seen council do two neighbourhood plans in my area, they didn't listen on either occasion, they didn't respect the views of residents, they upzoned, they put in high-density buildings, they ignored residents and my concerns. So I have no doubt that their operating modus operandi has, has not changed at all. And I feel very sorry for the Kangaroo Point residents who no doubt are going to cop a terrible plan, having listened over the years to the way in which this council has allowed huge height increases above, you know, what's been in their plan to date. That's been problematic as well. So number one, their botched neighbourhood planning process does not respect local communities. This council continuously refuses to listen to the advice of local councillors, that's been my direct and personal experience with two neighbourhood plans in my area. And certainly in listening to councillor Sri, it doesn't sound like they've done any better on the Kangaroo Point Peninsula Neighbourhood Plan and I won't be supporting it.
Further speakers? councillor Owen.
Thank you, I rise to speak on item H and this is going to be a wonderful addition for the Callanbar Ward. I would like to extend my thanks to the local residents in my community who have over quite an extended period of time borne the brunt in many ways of traffic changes, of noise impacts during the Logan Motorway Enhancement Project. And can I say that their patience, their willingness to understand the need for this work to take place is going to come back to them in spades. This new cycle park will reflect the many different areas of the city. It is a process that has been worked on being developed over a period of time. Transurban have certainly been working to get this right, to deliver a fantastic outcome for the local community. And what is important to remember is that we're dealing with a motorway enhancement project and this cycle park as a legacy project will actually blend in with the learning needs of young people, young cyclists, young pedestrians in understanding what it's like to be on a road or riding near a road and to start gaining a bit of understanding at an early age about traffic signals, traffic signage and also how to take care of their bikes. So Greenways Espinard Park is a park that over a number of years I've been master planning with the local community. We've, we've already got a three-sectioned dog off-leash area, we've got a multi-use games arena, we've got the outdoor table tennis table as a legacy of the Commonwealth Games, we've got large shelters, we've got outdoor gyms, half basketball court, tennis rebound wall, cricket nets, toilets, barbecues. So it's a great place for families with children and family members of all ages to go. And that is what we are trying to do, to make sure with this project that it blends with the infrastructure, the park infrastructure that is already there and it enhances it really to make this park and our suburbs as well as Brisbane of tomorrow better than the Brisbane of today. And I know that through the community consultation that I undertook as we were doing the master planning process, at that time, residents were really excited about looking at ways that we could activate the space a bit more. And the next stage in the process will be looking at how we can improve the BMX circuit track that's, that's there that I upgraded a couple of years ago to see how we can make that even better and more challenging for some of the young people. And I know councillor Wong's recently got a pump track over DM Henderson Park and some of my residents have been talking to me about that. And that's something that down the track, pardon the pun, that we will certainly explore some opportunities to make it a more engaging space. We have a lot of families living in close proximity to this particular location, many of them ride their bikes down and through there. Because the park is relatively flat, it's a great environment for young people to learn to ride. And in fact, at the Alchester State School Multifest on Friday night, I was talking to some residents about children learning to ride bikes and some of the adults that I was speaking to actually remembered learning to ride and gaining their bike skills in Timberland Park in Alchester, just next to the Girl Guides Hut. And so these sorts of things do stick with people, they are beneficial and they do create long-term memories within the community. Having these sorts of facilities close by to residents' homes also allows parents to take their families with multiple children in a close environment to their homes and allow, allow them to just really experience that park happiness that they can have as a family. So I really do thank Transurban for their focus on getting this delivered. I'm looking forward to seeing this open for my community and I know that we will certainly have many, many people down there joining us when this opens. Thank you.
Further speakers? councillor Burke.
Thanks, mister chairman, I just rise to enter the debate on item E, which is the Kangaroo Point Neighbourhood Plan. This is the fifth planning item on the agenda today and I just want to take this opportunity to thank the council officers and the strategic planning part of council for all of their hard work when it comes to the Kangaroo Point Neighbourhood Plan. This is the final point of adoption for the Kangaroo Point Neighbourhood Plan and I know the amount of work that's gone in by the council officers over the two and a half, nearly three years that this plan has been being worked on, mister chairman. And indeed, I also want to acknowledge and thank all the council officers for the work on the major amendments that we debated a little bit earlier. This plan and the draft strategy were released back in October 2017, mister chairman. It's been through numerous steps of public engagement through the draft strategy as well as then the formal consultation process on the neighbourhood plan itself. Mister chairman, a number of items that were raised as part of the submissions on the plan, and this is the second time that this has been to the council chamber, mister chairman, were around 355 Main Street, the Omlers Hotel site, objection to and the uncertainty around the application of active frontages and residential zone overlays, an objection to arcades being identified in the plan area, an objection to bar uses in the code assessable part of the planning scheme, a request for council to maintain strict building heights and controls, a request for council to prioritise the completion of the River Walk between Mowbray Park and Dockside, the request for council to better recognise the importance of the Evans Deacon Dry Dock and request for council for a dog off leash sharing the plan. So there's eight things there, mister chairman, that were identified by the residents. Number one, the Omlers Hotel, we took part of the heritage listing off the site and left the heritage listing on the older building closer to the river that actually has heritage values as identified by the Heritage Advisory Council and council. So tick, responded to concerns by the residents who submitted on this, on this neighbourhood plan. There was an objection to and certainly around the application of active frontages. So we removed the active frontages provision in the, in the Bridge Undercroft Precinct so that residents understood what was going to be going on in part of the neighbourhood planning area. Tick, respond to the residents when they raise concerns. There was an objection to the arcade identification in the plan area. So mister chairman, we removed the references to the arcade sections inside the planning area, so removal of the arcades, pedestrian connectivity improvements are now being sought through the overall outcomes and performance outcomes. Tick, respond to residents' concerns, mister chairman, when it comes to issues raised as part of the neighbourhood plan. Wanting council to maintain strict building height controls in the planning area to preserve views to the, to and from the Story Bridge. Tick, those provisions are already in the neighbourhood plan that went out for consultation, mister chairman. The request for council to prioritise the completion of the River Walk between Mowbray Park and Dockside. Well, this is another one of these furfies that we have to deal with, mister chairman. It was not this council that took that particular piece of walkway out of the LGIP, it was changes by the state government about the duration and the time that the LGIP runs for, mister chairman. And we can't have projects sitting in the LGIP that aren't in the right timeframe. And so it sits in our LGIP, in our Long Term Infrastructure Plan, not in our local government infrastructure plan, mister chairman. And we argued, we argued black and blue at the time with the state government about those changes and the need to make sure that the LGIP stayed with the time horizon and the planning horizon that it did. We didn't support the changes that were being put forward on the LGIP, mister chairman. And the outcome is that that project now sits in the LGIP and we remain committed to delivering that particular project. Mister chairman, the next one, so number seven, request for council to better recognise the importance of the Evans Deacons Dry Dock. We do that already, mister chairman. So in the plan, we've removed the word, sorry, we've identified the Evans Deacon Dry Dock in the overall outcomes and in figure E of the plan. So responded again to the concerns raised by the submitters, mister chairman. And the last one, and councillor Sri spoke about this, was the provision of a dog off leash area in the plan area. I'm sure councillor Sri can work with the planning officers in the park section of council to respond to that. Councillor Sri, so clearly there, the big, big issues that were raised and the submissions that were raised have either been dealt with as part of the responses and the changes to the neighbourhood plan.
Point of order, mister chairman.
Point of order councillor Sri.
Will councillor Burke take a question about where he thinks this dog off leash area should go?
That's not how it works. Councillor Burke, would you take a question?
No, mister chairman.
No, he will not take a question.
And I won't take the question councillor Sri because it's not my place to dictate in your community where you think a dog off leash area should go. If you want to find a way to work with the council...
Point of order, mister chairman. Point of order councillor Sri.
Will councillor Burke take a question?
Councillor Burke, will you take a question?
I just said I won't take a question, mister chairman. So if councillor Sri wants to work with the council officers to try and find space for a dog off leash area, that's up to councillor Sri in his local community as the local councillor.
Point of order councillor Sri.
Claim to be misrepresented.
Yeah, noted.
As I was saying, mister chairman, so that was the last thing that was raised. Now, there was only four submissions, I just went and had a quick look through the submission report that was there of the 77 that were lodged, there was four submissions that raised particularly the concern around the provision of open space, mister chairman. So the neighbourhood plan has a planning horizon out to 2036 and on the numbers in the neighbourhood plan, we need to get to 9.1 hectares of parkland or open space to meet our requirements under the city plan. Now, this notion that a resident in Kangaroo Point will not go outside of the plan area to visit a park is a furphy as well. So our desired level of service is for 750 metres as the walking distance, mister chairman, for people to be able to access parkland, that's in line with, with best practice around the world and emerging best practice around the world, mister chairman, where it's somewhere between 800 metres to a kilometre. And so we are at 750 metres for people across the whole of the precinct to be able to access the desired level of service when it comes to parkland. In fact, in that 750 metre distance, mister chairman, and not counting when the new pedestrian bridge goes in at Kangaroo Point over to the City Botanic Gardens, there is 15 hectares of parkland available to the residents of Kangaroo Point in this neighbourhood plan area, 15.82 hectares of parkland that's available for them to access within that 750 metre walking distance, mister chairman. So actual walking distance as opposed to as the crow flies, mister chairman. So for the benefit of councillor Sri, there's 0.86 at Mowbray Park, there's 0.35 at James Warner Park, there's 6.54 at Kangaroo Point Cliffs Park, there's 0.12 at Mowbray Park, there's 0.04 at Wellington Road Park, there's 0.52 at CT White Park, there's 1.4 hectares at Captain Burke Park, there's 0.87 at CT White Park again in a different type of park use, there's 0.54 again at CT Park in a different type of park use, mister chairman, 0.57 at Captain Burke Park, 0.08 at Wellington Road Park East and 3.93 hectares at Mowbray Park for a grand total of 15.82 hectares within 750 metres walking distance of the residents living inside the plan area. That's on top of the other space that's going to become available, including the space at the, at City Botanic Gardens when the new bridge is built and also the 12 hectares of land that's at South Bank, which is in pretty close walking distance as well, mister chairman, for residents living in the Kangaroo Point Peninsula. So this furphy that for some reason we need to buy more parkland there is being peddled by councillor Sri, not supported in the submissions, there was four. It's not this overarching push that councillor Sri led us to believe in the council chamber. When there's already, as I just outlined, 15.82 hectares of open space meeting the requirements for the residents in that space when we only need 9.1 hectares according to the desired levels of service inside the city plan within that 750 metre walking distance. It is not this arbitrary boundary that councillor Sri seems to think that all of that parkland must be provided within the plan area because residents don't see their communities as neighbourhood plans. They won't stop at the edge of a street and go, I can't walk across the road to Mowbray Park because it's not in the Kangaroo Point neighbourhood plan. They will use it, mister chairman. Just like they won't stop at the new Kangaroo Point Bridge and go, I can't walk across the river to the City Botanic Gardens and enjoy that, mister chairman. I mean, you know, this is, this is pretty simple stuff. And so again, I want to finish where I started, mister chairman, which is this has been a long process, engaging with the community, listening to their views, responding to their concerns as I clearly outlined when I went through those key issues that were raised through the submission process and how council has addressed all of those with pretty much the exception of we haven't built a dog park for the respondents in terms of the submissions that were put forward, mister chairman. And I've addressed councillor Sri's concerns around both the planning fore and the ability for council under the changes by the state government for that River Walk to be able to capture that and also then his concerns around parking. And I encourage all councillors to support item E in the chamber this afternoon.
Councillor Sri had a misrepresentation.
Yeah, just really briefly, councillor Burke seemed to misrepresent my comments around dog off leash areas, the problem that there is no park space available within the local area for a dog off leash area. So it's difficult for me to tell residents where to put one.
Thank you councillor Sri. Are there further speakers?
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Yes, could I just ask that item F is taken serially for voting purposes, please?
Okay, I'll now, I'll now explain to the room the situation. It will be B, C and H together, then E alone and then F alone. I'll repeat that at the time for voting. Are there further speakers? Lord Mayor. All right, I'll now, excuse, and H, I'll now put the resolution for items B, C and H. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
And the contrary, no. The ayes have it. To item E, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cook and councillor Cassidy. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bells. I, I think it's really hot in here, so I don't know, I don't know. I, I actually asked for the heat to, like, for it to, for it to be warmed up, yeah, like an hour ago. Okay? I'm sorry, I don't actually have the control in front of me. All right? So I will, as I say, I, I don't think it's cold here at all. All right, attendants, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mister Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 20 in favour and 7 against.
The ayes have it, please return to your seats. Okay. All right, now councillors, all those for item F, say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Adams and councillor Johnston, ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Attendants, please close the bars. Clerks, please read the result.
Mister Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 20 in favour and 7 against.
The ayes have it, please return to your seats. All right, councillors, the Public and Active Transport Economic and Tourism Development Committee report, please. That's all right.
Mister Chair, I move that the report of the Public and Active Transport Economic and Tourism Development Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 12th of November 2019, be adopted.
Seconded.
It's been moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Davis. So the report of the Public and Active Transport Economic and Tourism Development Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the 12th of November 2019, be adopted, is there any debate? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, mister chair, and as I promised in committee this morning, I am happy to speak about and follow up on the question that was taken on notice around the bus temperature gauges, which was not in the report in committee, but happy to talk about it now. There is a temperature... There is a temperature gauge which sits behind the dash in the driver's area of the bus, and the dial that shows the respective temperature is being removed from council buses. This is being done, as I explained this morning, because it is providing an inaccurate reading on the dial. This does not mean that there is no temperature gauge in the bus. There is an existing one which provides an accurate reading of the cabin and it is situated directly behind the driver and the temperature is shown on a small screen in the front of the bus known as the therob screen. So the screen is easily readable by a bus driver in their seat. The air conditioning within our bus fleet is set at 22 degrees. The best air conditioning can do is reduce the cabin temperature by around 10 degrees. So for example, if the outside temperature is around 35 degrees, the cabin's temperature will be probably around 25 degrees as well. But what we are seeing is that this temperature gauge was reading a lot higher than what the actual temperature was because of where it was positioned. As I explained this morning, it is the right of every driver if the temperature goes up above the acceptable limit for them to stop and get and request a new bus to be brought to their location and have themselves and the passengers changed over. However, you have to realise when this happens, there are services missed and delayed and passengers are put out until a new bus arrives. So this is one of the key reasons why the wrong temperature gauge is being removed, because there are incidences where drivers are reporting the bus to be 35 degrees or more and that is not actually the case. So there is a very good gauge for the reading of the driver's cabin directly behind them. They're going to be able to see that on the therob screen and hopefully we'll be able to make sure that not only are our drivers comfortable and that they are in the right temperature to be working, but they are also looking at, excuse me, looking after the bus passengers so there's not neededly interrupted services for their passengers as well. Last week's committee presentation was on the Doornock Terrace Safety Improvements Community Consultation results. Again, as with green bridges, as we're talking about metro, Team Shrinna is committed to improving transport options and increasing safety across Brisbane. As I mentioned earlier today, I was at the International Cycling Safety Conference last night and they had actually ridden councillor Sri through you, Mr Chair, you'll be happy. They had ridden through the Ullengabber Bike Way yesterday as a part of their workshop and they were very impressed. I did ask them whether they went down it rather than up it. It might have been a bit hard for some that are used to very flat areas in the Netherlands. However, they are loving what we are doing here in Brisbane. And this is a part of that link that we need to make sure, the Brisbane River Loop, that we have opportunities for not only communities but also our recreational cyclists as well. So we went out to consultation with a draft plan for safety improvements along this corridor. The concept design was distributed to approximately 12,700 households and businesses. And we did go with a draft concept, which was something that was very, much directed towards what the cyclists would clearly want to see. 1.2 kilometre of upgraded bike lanes, new pedestrian crossings, new traffic lights at Hampstead Road and Doornock Terrace intersection, bus stop consolidation, footpath improvements, and a modification of some key intersections, particularly as we're going down the hill and around the small shop area at Hargrave Road as well. There was, I will say very calmly, a very robust community response. Is that the diplomatic way of saying it? There was a very robust community response. The feedback came streaming in as soon as the consultation period started on the 30th of September until the 25th of October. We received over 1,000 submissions. I received many emails as well that I responded to and phone calls that were made. A range of users from motorists, cyclists, pedestrians, and public transport users as well. Of the respondents, approximately 75% lived in the local area. 88% used Doornock Terrace at least several times per week. But what we did get was the feedback was overwhelmingly negative in terms of the draft plan as a whole. And we heard that feedback loud and clear. And that is the feedback that we clearly wanted to hear. Not whether it was negative or positive, but we wanted people to have their say. That was the entire point of going out with a very clear, very probably robust plan as well that looked at the cyclists, probably over the residential amenity because we wanted people to have their say. The numbers spoke volumes. 64% of residents disagreed with the proposal in whole. 72% disagreed with removing the car parks. 72% disagreed with removing any vegetation to facilitate bike lanes. And 62% disagreed with consolidating bus stops. 58% disagreed with upgrading the 1.2 kilometres of bike lanes on both sides, on either side, I should say, of Doornock Terrace. So as was said in committee last week, as was said to people that phoned me and as was said for the letters that have gone out through the Lord Mayor correspondence and back out to those 12,700 residents, it will not be proceeding in its current form. However, we do recognise that Doornock Terrace is a known safety concern. So 75% of those residents did agree that the corridor needs to be safer for pedestrians. And the three most supported components were footpath improvements, pedestrian crossing improvements, and pedestrian refuges. So the project team is currently investigating those options based on this feedback. And I'm pleased to assure the community that these improvement works will be considered for future funding as well. We're not going to proceed with the Bike Way project as it was in the concept plan. We are going to look at how we can do a possible Bike Way option, retaining as much parking as possible, improving the safety and connectivity pedestrians, particularly safety for all users at key intersections. So this is just another proof again, even though I know the opposition hate to hear it, that Team Shrinna takes community consultation very seriously.
Okay, councillors, please allow the deputy mayor to answer, to give her presentation in silence.
12,700 letters went out to the affected area for consultation.
Okay, now councillors, there's been a lot of interjections on the deputy mayor. She's been, she's been talking for quite a while. Please allow her to finish her presentation in silence.
And as we said in the consultation that went out, the feedback from the community informs our forward-going plans. Team Shrinna is excited about our growing city and we are placing importance on infrastructure and our transport connectivity, but we need to make sure that residential amenity is also maintained and there is a balance between the two. Can I take this opportunity to thank the many people who wrote to council, myself and the Lord Mayor, expressing their views through the submissions and many different ways? We are listening. Team Shrinna is listening to the people of Brisbane. We've heard them loud and clear and we will be back to speak to them. We will look at plans, putting their feedback into that process.
Further speakers? Councillor Sri.
Thanks. I won't go on too, too long about this. I gave my comments in the committee meeting last week. But I just want to again make, make a point about the fact that it was odd that the administration went out to consultation on a plan that I said I didn't think the residents would support and that I didn't support. And I think we could have saved a lot of time and hassle if the administration just listened to me as the local councillor. And, and I think that's a bit disappointing. So, yeah, I, I just thought, why, why send out 12,000 letters about a plan when the councillor says that it's not going to win community support and the council's not particularly excited about it? That's.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Claim to be misrepresented.
Noted.
Sure, yeah. I'm, I am looking forward to working more constructively with the administration on this corridor. I think, I think there is an opportunity to get some good outcomes there. And I've said again, the priorities are zebra crossings, not just refuge islands, not just un-signalised crossing points where you have to race across moving traffic and cross your fingers, but we need actual zebra crossings. We need lower speed limits and traffic calming to support that. And we do need a solution to separate bikes and cars safely. It's not safe for people on e-scooters to be using narrow footpaths when there are so many hidden driveways along that corridor. So hopefully the council officers will be able to give me another briefing soon and we can start throwing around ideas as to what options I'll be willing to support and what options I think will have the community support rather than going out on a time-consuming and somewhat distressing consultation for residents when we knew that that was never going to get support in the first place.
Deputy Mayor, your misrepresentation, please.
I did not say that we went out there knowing it was not going to be supported. I said we went out there wanting to hear the results from the people. I am not surprised it was not supported, but if we did not go out.
Thank, thank you. Councillor Richards.
Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for dinner for a period of one hour, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Richard, seconded by councillor Marks. That this council now adjourn for a period of one hour for the purpose of dinner, commencing when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
And to the contrary, no. The ayes have it. See you all in an hour.